Our first order of business is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
We moved.
With support from Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Valan. Any changes or corrections? See none. Ms. Mitchell, please call it in.
Black.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Ennis.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Balani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. Tonight's agenda has been approved. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have two public comment sections this evening. The first one is now, the second one is at the end of the budget work session. So I am opening public comments for the kickoff to our work session. Are there any comments from the public that you would like to? Tell us now. Okay, I'm closing public comments. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number one on tonight's agenda.
Presentation matter of receiving a presentation summarizing the proposed fiscal year 2024-25 budget.
And please read item number two of tonight's agenda.
Budget work session manner of discussing the proposed fiscal year 2024-25 city of Berkeley budget.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Council. So I got my six, seven hour presentation for everybody. I also have my thirty minute presentation. So if you guys just want to prove right now, we're all good.
Could we find the, could we find the?
Yeah, exactly. So. Obviously, I'm new here. It's only been, I think I started mid-December or whatever. So it's been a whirlwind. I said, first thing, I'm going to screw up all your budgets and hopefully make them simpler. And so the results of that exercise will be tonight. I'll present that tonight. And really, the focus is going to be on the overview. So the seventy some page summary that you would have received last year. To me, as a non-finance person, that would scare the heck out. And you know, what am I looking at? And too many numbers and blah, blah, blah. And the department heads hated every line item that was in there as well. So worked with them, tried to streamline it. And I'll show you some of the streamlined stuff that we did before. But first, I thought it was an overview. I've got a half dozen slides, again, focusing on what has changed. And I'll get into how I built the budget and those kind of things, but focusing on the change. So that's what I'm going to go through at some of these. So first, the state budget act says we must create a budget and the budget must first identify our resources, so our revenues that we expect to collect and how we're going to spend. So that's what the budget access. It also says you should project your current year ending balances as well as show some historical data. So we show up the prior years audit in numbers. So that's really what guides what is included in the budget itself. Those are the requirements. The requirements also are that we have a balanced budget. So a balanced budget doesn't mean revenues must equal expenses. It just means that you must have available resources to fund it. As an example, if your, if our revenues were ten million and our expenses were twelve million, you're allowed to have a budget like that as long as you have fund balance to dip into that budget. So you must have sufficient fund balance to cover a use of fund balance. That's still a balanced budget, even though it's a use of fund balance. Okay, so it's important to keep that in mind. So we must have a balanced budget and it must be adopted by July one. Obviously, our charter has different headlines on it, but the state's mandate is must be enacted before July one. Literally, I had a client previously, the city of Tremec, they were actually taken over by the state of Michigan because they had a vacancy in their council and it was two-two, the two-two hated each other and couldn't agree. They didn't pass the budget by June thirty. The state said you must pass the budget by in thirty days, otherwise we're taking you over and appointing emergency manager. They appointed emergency manager thirty days later. So it is a serious thing because technically, on July one, if you don't pass the budget, no one can show up to place fire nobody because there's nothing appropriated to pay it. You can't legally pay it. So that's the importance of passing it. So again, balancing it, the budget is important to keep in mind is an estimate as we sit here today. So guess what? Tomorrow, the estimates, some of them will be incorrect. Prices can go up, state can say, hey, we found a whole bunch of money and we're going to give you a whole lot more next year. It's as we sit here today and what we know. Okay, so we know our city managers bolting on us and we know it might cost more next year. So I have to, he's only got a couple of days.
Right, right.
Come on in here, Carl, and then I'm leaving. So we know that and we know it might cost more. But so what's budget right now is existing salary fringe benefits, et cetera. If it costs more, that's what budget amendments are for. We will adjust as facts and circumstances come up. We have every right to say, we think it's going to be fifty grand more. Let's put fifty grand more in the budget. But again, as we sit here today, that's how the budget was built based on. Again, this process is, to me, it's, I want to highlight the important thing. So I created this new thirty-eight page document. This is the actual budget. So last year, you passed the seventy-four pages. This is the actual budget document. So why did I create this? Just because I want to create thirty-eight pages from scratch and then nothing better to do with my first three months that I was here. No. The purpose of this is to really highlight the important numbers here. So it's not the line by line by line items. It is the departmental totals because that's what the budget's based on. It's based on revenue categories and department on the expenditure side, it's departmental revenues. So it's not, we don't pass it on each of those individual lines you see in the seventy-four pages. It's passed on finance and city manager and on those levels. So it's important to keep the focus at that level. And that's what this does. Okay, so we'll go through that. And so again, the seventy-four pages are here as resources. So why did that go up? This is here so you can look, flip to those pages and say, oh, okay, I see that salaries went up or supplies went up. And again, that's what a lot of the questions that we got from you guys on, on why did this go up or specific line items, which we answered a lot of those questions, but that's where that comes from. If you look in here, there's a lot of nice round pretty zero numbers. So that guy, he uses a lot of estimates and how the heck does general fund budget do exactly zero? And every one of these funds budget to exactly zero. Budgets are an estimate. Okay, budgets are an estimate. So when you looked at last year's budget, which I'll touch on in a second, it said we, the projection for twenty-four, twenty-five was we were going to dip into our fund balance by seven hundred and eleven thousand and some change. The reality is we amended it to say we identified what our revenues are and we're spending every dime of that. So we we reinstituted or we eliminated some of the items that took us into that deficit. And again, rounded that because again, it's an estimate. There's no way, if you want to look at last year's number, then you'll never be exactly where last year's numbers show up. They're an estimate. And so they're rounded, which is why it comes to zero. So no, I'm not that good and no, nobody's that good. We're estimating it to a zero. But that's why they're there to a zero. We identified our resources. And again, here, the expectation is we want to spend every dime of those. We have needs that exceed every single one of our revenues that we're getting. And if we have five hundred thousand more, our budget would still be zero because we would address some of the other needs that we have that are addressed in this budget. So how I created this budget, I took your last year. So then again, I'll show you as soon as we get out of the slides here. I took your, it was a two-year budget passed last year. Obviously, state law says you can only pass one at a time, but it's always good to have two and even three. I recommend possibly going out to three. After three, it gets kind of iffy as far as the balance is going. But your two-year budget is what I started with. So I literally copied that over, used that as my baseline, and then went through line by line, every single one of departments and came up with our estimates. So last year's, what's interesting, last year's revenues were fourteen point nine million dollars. This year, you'll see in here, they're about fifteen point six or whatever. So our revenues went up. On the expenditure side, I actually reduced them by more than a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So again, it's going line by line estimating what it is. And so again, revenues equal expenses. So what that meant was we were able to not only keep our budget there, but as salaries went up and fringe benefits went up and things changed, we're still able to keep it right where it was. And with our revenues going up, we were able to incorporate some of those things. And again, we didn't want to show use of fund balance in the current fiscal year. So that's why revenues equal expenses. There's a lot of discussion about, again, this guy talks fast, so. There's a lot of discussion on geez, property tax revenues, literally the five percent next year and the five percent that's going to go out in this July's taxes. Those are record highs. I mean, in the past twenty years, inflation has never been that high. Hadley's never kicked in. These are the only two years in history that Hadley's actually kicked in and had to reduce it under the five percent inflation was ever less. This year's five point one percent, the last year was seven point five or seven point six. So the average over the previous twenty years was two point four percent. So we're seeing huge inflationary levels, which again, results in revenues going up, but it also results in inflationary increases, wage pressures as you just passed the public safety increases as well as cost of goods. You know, and especially in the construction guidelines, home smokes, those are up thirty, forty percent in the long cases. So when you think about revenues, yes, our property taxes are projected to go up five percent. Yes, the state is generously giving us two percent increase on our revenue sharing, even though their increases are much more than our two percent. But the net of all that stuff, those are only a, the two largest sources of our revenue, but they're not all of our revenue. So when you look at the actual net, we're looking at a three percent net increase again, net of all of our grants because we got the significant one point eight million dollars of grant this year for the HBAC, and we're still using some of our COVID money. But outside of the grants, all other things being equal, our revenues are up a net three percent in year one and one point six in year two, using a, I think it's a four percent increase in property tax. So again, keep that in mind. And you know, a lot of people seem to think that, you know, boy, revenues are way up or whatever. That is not way up. You know, but some components are actually up. Again, focusing on the key changes in here, the, you'll see in the general fund this year, there's a new department called facilities. And that has a budget of five hundred and three thousand dollars for the first year. Holy crap, we added five hundred and three thousand dollars for facilities? No way. What we did was the facilities pieces of a lot of people's budgets were buried in there. So within public safeties department, they had two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars worth of facility related costs that the department heads didn't control, that they, they really, you know, what's in your apartment should be what you control and what you oversee, et cetera. They didn't oversee these costs. So what we did was we broke out the facilities related activities into a new department. And this is the departments we took it from. It includes the library, city hall, VPW, and obviously public safety. So you'll see reductions in those departments and an increase in that new one. And that's zero. So whatever those were, we just moved them into a new department for record keeping and responsibility purposes. Okay, just keep that in mind. So again, you should see those corresponding reductions in those areas. Major local and infrastructure fund. So those three funds really should be thought of altogether. Okay, so when we think about the, so again, the infrastructure fund is the village that was passed for the roads and for water and sewer, et cetera. So our goal with that infrastructure fund, we went to our voters and said, we need this money for the lead line projects, for our roads, for all of those things. And what was happening was the allocation between all three of them wasn't exactly culture and actually caused our water and sewer fund, which is not wasn't exactly properly accounted for or properly budgeted, which resulted in the water and sewer fund actually having to borrow more than a million dollars from the general fund at the end of last year. It literally ran out of money and had to borrow a million dollars from the general fund at the end of last year. This cracks it. So we're going to correct it with budget amendment in the water and sewer fund in fiscal twenty-four. And then again, you should be thinking of these three as interconnected. You'll see in the budget, the infrastructure fund gets to zero. And again, the whole reason for that village is to use it on our roads and we have an infinite demand on them. So those three, again, when you have a major road project, if the roads funds don't have enough money, the infrastructure subsidizes it. Same with local streets, same with the water and sewer fund. So think of them that way, that they're all used in conjunction with each other. So again, what you see in those funds is just our our annual, we do a road project and we also do the lead line projects and those are all in conjunction and they're all covered by using these three funds. Solid waste. I heard that's everybody's favorite thing, something about chippers and reefs and I don't, I don't know. But the reality is the new fees that were implemented during this past fiscal year, the commercial fee as well as the tidying program, all of those have really stabilized that fund and you'll see that in here. So that fund is now gone from a significant drain on cash to stability because of those funds there. And because of that as well, curbside deep pickup, a new department was created in that fund and that's will, there'll be a full season of that to repair this. Sidewalk fund. So I guess we've had a five-year program getting through the entire city to flag the issue with sidewalks. So that five-year program ended in our current fiscal year. So the current budget pauses that program and doesn't have any sidewalk replacements scheduled for the next two fiscal years. So you'll see there in the current fiscal year, the general fund has also been subsidizing that to the tune of a hundred some thousand dollars. So that's not the only reason, but it's really, as we talk about future needs or possible heavy overrides or whatever else, that could possibly be covered under that. But one way or another, we're pausing it at least for the next fiscal year because again, it's two-year budget. It shows two years, but at least for the next fiscal year, we'll collect all the funds because we allow people to pay enough to over a year in some instances before we actually get our money back. So collect all the funds and then resume that program if needed through the special assessment program. But I, I like everybody else hate when they put the little, you know, mark on my sidewalks that I know it's. The good news is it has been, the budget does not show that we're going to do a sidewalk program for the next two fiscal years. So that's good news. Again, the water and sewer fund. So as we talked about before, to me, this was the biggest issue that borrowing and stabilizing the water and sewer fund. So to to fix this, one of two things. So the first thing to me, the most important thing is how we budget the water and sewer fund. So the water and sewer fund, if you look at last year's budget, it said depreciation of like six hundred thousand dollars and it didn't budget principal payments on our debt. That is a one methodology of doing it is doing it. That's more of the commercial way to do it. How water and sewer funds should be budgeted is really on a cash flow basis. Because the reality is we need to set our rates sufficient to cover our operations, maintenance of replacement costs, including debt within the fund. And so if you think about what depreciation is, that's those stupid accounting people who say you buy it and then you got to write it off over time and blah, blah, blah. If you look at the expense, it's just a paper entry that it has nothing to do with your operations. If you, if your budget last year said you're going to six hundred thousand for depreciation, but it didn't include half a million dollars of principal payments on the food drain. So that coupled with capital outlays, all of a sudden, we're spending a lot more than what we set our rates. You set your rates based on actual cost. It's a cash flow basis. So you'll see depreciation isn't budgeted, principal payments are budgeted, capital is budgeted. But when all said and done, when you look at your auto report, there will be no principal payments in the auto report. There will be no capital in the auto report. All of that's done. The wonderful accounting rules require you to treat that differently. But the reality is we must set a rate sufficient to bring in enough money to cover those costs, especially when literally this year started with a zero, with negative a million dollars. And like I say, I'm very comfortable that at June thirty of this year, that zero will be dealt with. It will be taken care of. So an amendment will be coming for you shortly from that. And that what this budget does is ensures that we live within our means again, assuming the same rate of increase. So I believe it was a ten percent increase last year. The assumption is again, that same amount of increase this year. And again, the biggest draw on the water and sewer fund is our capital. It's the state mandated lead lines, million dollars a year plus that we must replace the lead lines. They said you must do it. You must do it in X number of years. So by the way, you jack up your rates and use up all your cash reserves. You know, and we've tried for grants. We are to a limit, you know, for grants, which is, yes, that's accounting. Okay, so again, that's the high level stuff that, you know, I want to keep everybody, yeah. And so when I, when you look at some of the the items here. So just wanted to show you last year. So this is your last year's budget and the twenty-four, twenty-five year that we talked about here. So this literally is, is my starting point. And again, the starting point was so right here. So our budget's a fourteen point nine million dollars and fifteen point six in expenditures. We're going to dip into our fund balance by seven hundred and eleven thousand dollars. That was the start. And again, I highlighted the differences. So and that's literally how this was, was created. This budget was created. And this budget report again, took that and utilized those and came up with it. So let me step back, step from there. So within our VSNA system, you're all going to be accountants before I'm done with this. So what I did was, and again, utilizing our general ledger system to its fullest potential, I took the budget that you created and just dropped it in here. And then I went through every single one of the line items. And I created the city manager's proposed budget. Then we turned it over to the department heads and said, here's that Carl guy who talks too fast. So this is what he thinks it's going to be. Please take a look at that and tell us if you agree with it or don't agree with it. And if you don't agree with it, I actually had another column and all they did was had to put in the change that they wanted to do. Because again, they are the experts. I'm not the experts. However, municipals are such a a boring predictable animal as far as expenditures go. Seventy percent of our costs are salaries and fringes. So very easy to predict. We have all those in there. Then you have utilities, then you have all your other stuff. So there's very little on the expense side that the department's actually controlled. So when you, when you look at the expenditures here, everything that's wages and fringe benefits and everything else, that's all filled in. What they focused on was each of the respective line items. And again, they went through one by one and said, I think I need two hundred more, two hundred less, et cetera. So wasn't, they didn't have to create a budget. They didn't have to do any of that kind of stuff. We created it and then we got back together with them and went over any of the difference that they have so that together, we all came up with the proposed budget that you had before the events. So how did we get rid of the seven hundred thousand dollar shortfall? How do we get rid of the seven hundred thousand shortfall? Originally, when Matt sat down with me, it was, geez, I got to cut all the capital out of here to get that balance. But as you know, with our increase in property tax revenue and the adjustments to some of the other revenues, we didn't have to cut that many out of there, as many as we had hoped to get out of there. And actually, we were able to get in what we needed to with a reduction of overall expenditures by more than a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So again, the process, I think, worked very well. The department heads were very receptive to it. I think I got hugged and kissed a couple of times. Some of the guys, it was very well received. But that's how it was created. And then we talked about the budget document itself. So again, this is the level that you adopt your budget at. And this is how we're going to start the budget meeting after I take breath of just kind of going through and answering questions and the department heads talk about it. But again, here is, again, let me touch on the estimate. I did not use, so the budget act says we are required to estimate where we think the year end is going to be. That doesn't mean it has to be amended budget. That doesn't mean it has to be anything related to any document that we have here. This is finances estimate of where we think we're going to be. Well, why didn't I use the current amended budget, which says the general fund's going to dip into fund balance by, I think, a hundred thousand dollars. The issue with that is your former finance director, a twenty-year school guy, all he did when he did the amendment, he went through and said, oh, this revenue's up. I'm going to adjust that up. This expenditure's up. I'm going to adjust that up. Didn't have the background to dig in to find that our fringe benefits, our healthcare contributions are running ten percent below where they were last year and our budget is thirty percent higher than it was last year. Didn't have a lot of the background to be able to offset some of those negatives with what's there. And so to me, the most, the more realistic number was the number before that amendment, which again, is still not perfect. I think it's actually, our net results are going to be higher than this. But again, I'll have that for you in your amendment. So this is the number that was your amended budget before the last one that was just passed in January. Again, I'm comfortable that that is a reasonable estimate for where we're going to end up. And I literally think we're going to end up a little better than that for the current fiscal year. So that's what those numbers represent. These two numbers, keep in mind, this is the actual audited number. These are estimates, again, just tools for you when you're sitting here to say that fast-talking guy, are these reasonable numbers? You know, so this says two hundred and nine thousand, he has two forty-eight, we're a hundred and eighty-three. Why is that? You know, five twenty-six, five seventy-eight, five seventeen. Why is that? These are just tools for you to constructively evaluate the number because this is literally the only column that you're worried about tonight is the twenty-four, twenty-five proposed budget. All right. And like I say, I have a whole lot of other fun stuff up here as well.
I can't wait.
So that is the overview. And I will need to take a drink. So I think what Matt and I had talked about was just starting with, so again, each of these, this is page eighteen, if you want to follow along the document. The key, the key numbers here is eighteen through thirty-two. These, this is the meat and potatoes. I also like, again, the budget document, the the six, seven, eight pages, I think that the city manager messaged, that is not a required part of the budget document. I like that and I always encourage my mayors and city council and city managers to put that together. That's the management's opportunity to say in English, hopefully, of what's happening, some of the major assumptions, any of that kind of good stuff in there. So again, this is one of the, I'm not saying that because he's sitting here, but this is one of the more well-written ones. Most of them are one or two pages. This is, like I say, very thorough and hits a lot of the highlights that we have here. But again, nothing's required. This isn't audited. This isn't anything. This is the city manager's description of the meat and potatoes that went into the budget documents. Then I threw in some fluff, I call it, of our policies and decisions and blah, blah, blah. But again, the key important stuff is eighteen through thirty-two because that's in essence what you're asked. All right. And these are structured, you see here, our general fund is the first couple of pages. That's the longest between the two. And then we get into each of the funds, the major streets, the local streets, et cetera. So what we thought we'd do, if it's okay with you guys, is just kind of go through here. And again, I can highlight some of the estimates. We can take questions, you know, et cetera. But the goal is at this point, it's we, this is the numbers we're proposing. So now it's convincing you that these are the good numbers because ultimately, city managers proposed, mayor council ultimately have to approve of it. So to the extent any changes need to be made, any questions need to be answered, that's the whole purpose of it.
So revising the process portion of this, we did put public budget available for council as well as the community as of April first. Council has taken the opportunity to submit questions. We did have a running document of those questions being answered as they would go along. If there are items that you feel like, or or went unanswered or if there's a better jumping off point for a different discussion, we welcome that. But it's very much worth noting that council submitted a lot of your thorough questions. It was obvious the council has reviewed the entire document that Carl submitted, as well as the line by line portion of this that supports the totals that you see on the screen or formally saw on the screens. And I will say, I appreciate how much time the council has spent on this. Since we, the platform that we use for the question and answers, I mentioned this in an email earlier today, but you can see who spent time inside that document. So it did look like each of the council members thoroughly went through and reviewed the questions and answers. We didn't keep a running number of it, but by the time we were done answering questions, I think the page, pages numbered about nineteen pages worth of questions and answers. So our directors was also also had the opportunity to review those items. The lead was initially taken for Q and A by Carl with myself and they got, Gainsor. Don't worry about saying it wrong now. Doing, supporting, giving additional information and context on that. But then, as you saw, some of our council member, some of our directors went in and likewise provided information on the intents behind the resource requests, what made it in and what didn't into the city manager's recommended budget. As I mentioned in my report out to the council, the city certainly faces challenges. This is a budget that we're very happy that we were able to, especially the general fund, adhere our expenditures to our anticipated revenues. But we did so with with putting off several different larger capital projects. I think you'll see that in our capital improvements plan that we pushed forward, year one, year two of that plan adequately tailored to the revenues we have. Year three, four, five is where you see those numbers start to grow because as we get closer to that, hard decisions have to be made to defer and sometimes even cancel projects. And that was really the largest driver of why we feel, you know, additional revenues could be needed. Keeping up with those capital expenditures has been continually a challenge of ours for a good, for several years, at least certainly my time here. Steve, I'm sure it's likewise true for, for the span of your time behind council as well. It has primarily been a challenge across all Michigan communities. Just to set that context, infrastructure is sort of the issue of our generation. You've heard me say, I didn't use it in this document because I felt I overused it. But I sort of use the term phrase, this is the age of consequences. We spent multiple decades building out, adding infrastructure, sort of expanding our footprint across the state. And yet we have no more people than we had thirty years ago. We've got almost three times as much of the infrastructure. And there just isn't enough, there isn't a funding model that truly supports local governments in place in Michigan to keep up with now what that demand is. So things come due on our watch. We just have to be the lucky. So things come to on our watch. We just happen to be the lucky few in the chair. Uh, when that moment has arrived and, uh, it's, it's been upon us for, for a number of years now. But. That's, uh, has been a large driver of some of the. Difficulties we've had from a, um, from a budgeting standpoint. I also note in here, uh, Carl mentioned as well, recruitment and retention of our staff. Uh, is going to continue to be a very difficult struggle for Berkeley as well as municipalities across the. Uh, what seems to be at least the United States, um. Public service is not an industry that you see vast amount of people going into. Uh, and that's, uh, from administration to, uh, police and fire, to public works. It's an area that we are struggling to get individuals, uh, interested in pursuing as a long-term career. Uh, so. Simple supply and demand, uh, economics starts to come into play as you have less people. Uh, willing to do a job, the, the cost or the price that they get to do that job starts to go up. And we are in an era right now, regionally and across the state, uh, we're in a bit of an arms race. Uh, as far as recruitment retention goes. There are people trying to steal talented individuals from other municipalities and other jurisdictions. Uh, and we're also trying to incentivize people to come into a field that traditionally has been known for very low wages, but high benefits. The high benefits have eroded now to the point where a generation coming into this have no recollection of that being sort of the give and take. They are just solely focused on the wages. Um, municipalities are waking up to the fact that you can't offer less across the board and still expect, um. People to select this over higher paying jobs in the private sector. Uh, in health administration or nonprofit administration. Those, those last two are, are, um, big. Areas where, at least at the educational level, you see, um, younger people, college students, uh, master students. Selecting those as majors and those as areas of emphasis over, uh, local governments, managements, uh, really just. Public sector jobs in general. So, um, those are two of the things that I talked about as challenges in my budget documents. Um, they're really, um, they're really going to, they're not. They're not near term. Uh, the troubling part is, at least with infrastructure, uh, and probably to a certain extent as well. There is no silver bullet. There's no, um, singular. Solution on the horizon outside of put resources towards this issue. Uh, Carl, I believe Carl did a really good job of covering the other items. One thing I do want to note in my manager's message, as of publishing it, we had not yet received the updated. Uh, mortgage reduction or millage reduction fraction, uh, generated by Headley, uh. At the time, we thought based on the, where we sat with, um. With the inflation rate, that the city would, again, not have to roll back, uh, for the second year in a row. Uh, that proved to be inaccurate, uh, that we received the county's estimation after this was published. We did, uh, we are required to do a slight roll down, uh, yet again. So our mortgage reduction fraction was, uh, ninety nine point zero seven. So less than one percent, uh, but we are back into the starting phases of seeing those mileage numbers rolled down year to year. Uh, so if they, again, as we have said in the past, uh, proposal A, heavy amendment, both of them, uh, on their own. Great protections for homeowners and taxpayers. It's the cumulative effect of those two together. What our, um, what our homeowners will see is, uh, yes, a five percent increase in the taxable values of their home. But they will see a slight reduction in the mileage rate assessed by the city, uh, on that, on that new updated taxable value. And then again, uh, our intention to, for the rest of this is to go through. Uh, your department directors have all assembled. They want, uh, they would go through and present to you some of the stories. Some of the resource allocations, the reasoning justifications behind what they brought forth. Uh, in this recommended budgets, uh, ultimately, what our directors have done is they submitted. Um, requests, um, to my office. I was in conjunction with the finance director. Uh, and we had to evaluate what, uh, which of those requests will forward and which of them, um, would not, would have to be deferred here. So. Anything else before we move on to that? Do you want to go through your totals first? Or do we want to hear from the department directors first?
Well, I could just touch on the revenues briefly in case there's any questions there and then the, the meat of it can be on the expenditure side. So again, general operating fund of the city. This is the, I call this fund one and one or two is usually fund one A. Yeah, I know, as far as importance going, where we spend the majority of our time. So as I touched in the overview. Property taxes are nine point eight, almost ten million dollars of our fifteen point five million dollars in revenue. And again, the projection is a five percent increase in revenues there and then for for the following year. The key, one of the killers here for us is the federal grants line. So we've got a million six in the ARPA COVID monies that, that came in. How do we recognize that? Six hundred grand in twenty three, five hundred grand in twenty four, and the last of it will be next fiscal year. And then it's completely gone. And, and so again, we're balancing a budget. With five hundred thousand dollars less forever and ever and ever. So we're utilizing that, we're. You know, and I think that's what allows us to buy some of the capital and everything else. State sources, again, as you know, the state, the amount they distribute to us from our sales, sale, our percentage of sales tax. Doesn't keep up with the actual percentages. They were constitutionally guaranteed apart, but the statutory piece doesn't always, uh, keep pace. So their projection, the, these, this projection two oh six three comes directly from treasury's website. That's why this violates the Carl rule of nine nine one. On there because that's the exact number that treasury has for us and so on, but I put it there. Ultimately, the total gets rounded, you see, but that is the treasury to go on, uh, treasury's website, same Michigan's website. That is the number they show for us right there. Uh, the rest charges for services, uh, fines and vouchers, that's our ticket revenue. You get ticket revenues with marijuana being illegal, that has killed a lot of that and not being able to, to staff our departments completely. Um, ultimately impacts the, our share of the ticket revenue. License and permits, and that is, uh, business building activities. That's why that's been kind of an uptick. Investment incomes, thank goodness, at least high interest rates mean high interest rates for us. So, uh, interest rates doing pretty well and then our other revenue. So you can see there. Probably taxes and, and state sources are eleven, twelve million dollars of our fifteen point five. So we can double everything else and it's not gonna do a whole heck of a lot for us. We can't touch building. Permits, revenues, that's pretty restrictive for the most part. The interest income we're gonna get is the interest income where you get ticket revenue, ticket revenue. So there's really not a whole heck of a lot else that. We also make control. And again, the net increase ignoring the grants is a, is a three percent increase, which is a, a pretty decent. So questions specifically on the revenues? Alright. On the expense side, so we figured we started city council, so we were gonna wipe that line out. I, I think the only change, the, the increase you see there was on the, um, conferences and workshops.
Yes, uh, no, uh, we don't get to pick where these, uh, conferences are hosted. Every four years, Michigan Municipal League selects Magan Island as its location. Um, it, so we have funding in there for that, uh, as I've touted multiple times. Uh, Berkeley is unique in that it sends, or it has seven active council members who all attend these conferences. Uh, that is something that we've worn as a point of pride for, for a very long time. I want to make sure the funding is available. That nobody gets left behind strictly due to a funding issue. Um, I. Do understand that Michigan, that Michigan Municipal League is reconsidering its four-year cycle. Uh, okay, so that may not be the, the cycle in the future. Uh, but again, if we want to go and if we want to receive some of the best, uh, information possible from the city's premier advocate for local government. Uh, you have to go to where they're hosting you and that, uh, this year it is, uh, Michigan, uh, Michigan, Michigan Municipal League's. Uh, uh, annual conference is at Magan Island. Where we look at, um, different housing or, uh, not housing, but, uh, room and board arrangements, uh. There might be some options that are not, don't, don't put you in the conference hotel, uh, but put you on the island somewhere else. Um, but again. Uh, we, we do want to fund this. We don't want to see council miss out on great information opportunities, um. Uh, for, for budgeting reasons. So that is why you see the, uh, the slight bump in the snake there, uh, twenty eight thousand. Uh, if you wanna look back, uh, twenty three, twenty, twenty two, twenty three, for those that, uh, are looking at historical reference. Uh, those are the years we funded the strategic planning work.
Done on the MML conference, I'm on a couple of MML committees and I've been constantly lobbying with them. To sell to Macanau. It's, you know, it's. It's an unnecessary expense.
Alright, anything else, council? Yeah, pretty boring.
Yes, we are.
Alright, city manager. You can see there again, very much, uh, unchanged. Um, just globally, the union contracts, whatever the rate of increases are for wages. Uh, are incorporated throughout for non-union personnel, the, uh, the rate used was three percent. For each of the years as far as salary. So that's why you'll see slight increases going along the ways. And what we tried to do as I went through each department, so like in this case here, salaries went up a little bit. And then I think the consultant revenue went down to offset some of it. So again, you see there, it's almost went up, uh, two thousand dollars from. You know, the current estimated budget.
And, uh, context from the consultant, what our intent is to continue to fund, um. Speakers, uh, educational opportunities for staff that, uh, that's initiative that's headed out of the city manager's office. Uh, very much taking into mind that a budget is a, is a not to exceed, it's not a challenge. Uh, so we have leaned heavily on, uh, existing contractual relationships. Uh, we brought in heavy forward. Uh, to, to, um, for the EAP. We've looked at the county for some inexpensive customer service trainings. We've looked at, uh, bringing in our, our very own, uh, benefits consultants who we work with already. Who, uh, would do this as part of their existing contract. So in all those situations, we want to have a line item in place. In order to, uh, be able to train our employees on, on needed items. Uh, but again, with. Where cheaper options exist, uh, that is what we will utilize.
Um, we always discussed some about. What the salary might be for the incoming, uh, next city manager. We heard from Gov HR on any recommendations salary wise.
Um, I can tell you they are, um. They're gonna be providing you some additional information. Um, there's been a number of recent searches in the southeast Michigan region. Um, I can tell you just little lot from anecdotally, you're low. Um, but I can't tell you what they're going to recommend. I mean, I can tell you a handful of areas, uh, of similar communities. Um, of where they landed at, um, but you're, you're probably gonna be. Fifteen to twenty plus more. Be my guess.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest that we amend this up, you know, at this point, um, knowing that it's probably gonna be higher. I was gonna suggest fifty, that's, I, you know, not a, let's make sure we spend fifty, but. It gives us enough breathing room, you know, depending on what.
I'm working right now to try to see if I can't get James scheduled on May sixth, um, to come in before the meeting first. As part of a study session, because we also have another item to talk through. Um, so I'm hoping that at that point he'll have some additional. Uh, conversation with you all and, and where that would be set because I, I think his intent is to try to get things posted here. Um, in the relatively near future, that'll be a, a key piece that you are gonna wanna, uh, give him direction on.
So circle back on that. Did I hear consensus that the mayor and council would like to bump that? Is recommending to bump that budget down. So again, I guess that's how I'm used to doing these. So if there's the majority and you're all in consensus. I don't know if you want a motion to adjust it or if it's just you're all in consensus and say, Carl, do it. Okay, okay, yeah. So again, if, if that's the case, I'll just make the note and we'll adjust it accordingly. The other side of that is to try to find additional savings or right now are we saying. Dip in the fund balance by the fifty thousand for now and then we'll look to find it once the new fiscal year comes in.
Yeah, I think as we go through, we're probably gonna find some savings.
You find some savings?
And, okay. Good luck. We can see where.
Yeah, okay, so, alright.
I just have a question procedurally, like, we're going to go through line by line tonight as well, right? Like, you don't want us to bring those now?
No, I want you to bring those now. The intent is to, this is the level of here. So as we go through each of the department, if you have specific questions. Because again, that, the line item, this is the budget document. So if you have questions, that, those line names make up these totals. So if you have a question on a total and there's a specific line in it, please, please bring it up now.
Okay, and so we won't, we're not planning to present you line by line. That was a lot of the work of getting it out to you ahead of time. A lot of the work, uh, of answering individual questions that council's had over the last couple of weeks. But again, single line item out of how many or so that are in the manager's office, we're gonna call attention to something. We, we won't bring to you a line by line analysis.
My notes were designed differently.
Okay.
Um, and not all the questions that were sent, like, some of them sparked additional.
Yes, but yeah, that's what I was saying earlier.
Right, so I've set my notes a little bit differently.
And so ultimately, I will summarize these. So what I'm used to doing is saying, okay, here is the proposed budget. Here's a summary of the changes from the budget meeting. You know, and here's the net result and then that will be sent out to all of you to, for confirmation.
Uh, yeah, so thank you for all of this. And I don't know where my colleagues are in this. When our directors present, are they gonna be providing like the. The qualitative behind the quantitative and the story of the numbers? I, I think for me personally, like. We've had a lot of time to dive into and ask questions about each line and. It felt like a theme of a lot of the questions we're trying to understand. Uh, the policies, the strategies of spend versus, you know, different choices. And so is that something? Cause I, for me, that's gonna be very helpful in. Really truly bringing this budget to a meaningful place.
That's certainly our attempt for this.
Okay.
Uh, thank you. I am on the, the same page there. I do feel this is the appropriate altitude. With the ability to jump into any of the details as appropriate, uh, rather than, you know, oh boy. So yeah, doing this is very good and I appreciate the ability to hear the stories, the strategy, the thought process, the vision. Behind it rather than going, okay, you know, here we're gonna do this, here we're gonna, you know, this much money for a racquetball, you know, okay, come on.
So we cheated with the first two, and that's just you guys and, you know. City manager. So the rest, everybody else gets to talk and then just wait.
Yeah.
So, so thank you for this approach.
Okay. So city manager, council still good there? And before we go into the clerk.
Chat on that?
I, yeah, yeah, just let me.
I mean, it's a decent starting point.
I think fifty is reasonable.
And even if it is a salary, it might cover, um, the search fees.
Right, search fees, relocations, if that's relocation from out of state or.
It's a good starting point.
Yeah, and again, remember, again, the key here is, this is our testament as of now. So what if you don't hire city manager for nine months from now? You know, or what if it's next month? If it's next month, that budget will be amended and again, we'll amend this as well.
And we've adhered differently once the, you know, consulting base and then we'll adjust accordingly.
Yeah, cause you could very easily say, ah, we'll just wait and amend it till I want, or again, this, any of this is fine. So I just.
Certainly, if you're pulling your search, uh, costs from this budget, that makes sense. Otherwise, I would. Put the search costs in city council and then. The net of that in city manager's, but that's, again, that's minutia. I mean, that's, those are things that probably don't really matter, but.
Okay.
Was provided for.
That's it.
Seeking of unfunded mandates, the clerk slash elections.
Um, looking ahead to fiscal year twenty four, twenty five, we will continue implementation of proposal twenty two dash two. Which includes a myriad of, of unfunded Monday mandates. We are continuing to purchase all new election sleeves. That's the sleeves that the. Absentee ballots go into. So for each type of election, we need to purchase all new sleeves. Because due to the change in instructions. So that will be a large cost. We're continuing to replenish our stock of. Inner election envelopes, which is which the residents mail their ballots back in. Um, the state does now provide the permit for the mandatory, um. Postage paid on all election, but we need to replenish our stock with the envelope. Don't have that. We are also still in the process of sending out election-related mailers to register voters. We're going. Possibly going through redistricting, it looks like, possibly with the state reps, which that's going to. Entail another mailer to all registered voters. That's unfunded, um, and including. Changes with early voting centers. That is also an unfunded mandate where we have to sign a mailer to all registered voters. We're continuing enhanced security measures. That's something that we have a big focus on for the remainder of this fiscal year. As well as moving into the new fiscal year. That, um, along with that, I am requesting an increase of in pay for election workers. Uh, ranging from fifteen dollars total to twenty dollars depending on their role. The job has become much more complex and we are starting to lose workers who are very concerned for their safety. And we just, we need to value their contributions and remain competitive. So I can attract and retain. And we just, we need to value their contributions and remain competitive, so I can attract and retain our longtime workers. We are also going to be replacing our e-pull books and our help desk computers. This has been planned and um Mr. Lysica was spot on with beginning to, we're gonna replace half at the end of this current fiscal year, which was approved by council. And then the other half in the next fiscal year, right at the June, July portion. Um, we did have a couple of laptops get a little wonky, so we're right on track to have that. That's an essential piece of equipment, our e-pull books. That's what the voters are all checked in on. Um, so it's essential that that's functioning tip top shape. Um, are the majority of our, the clerk's office budget is based on elections. We have two, the the upcoming fiscal year budget is based on three elections, two which are planned. And then we always budget one reserve election in case um the city or school district does request that we run a special election. We will receive federal reimbursement for the February twenty twenty four presidential primary and the November presidential election. Those will arrive in the twenty four, twenty five fiscal year. We do not have reimbursements in for regularly planned odd year elections, local elections. So the only way we we would receive a reimbursement in an odd year is if there is a special election asked of us by the school district, it could, you know, or other entities in open county.
Ms. Mitchell, does reimbursement cover the entire total cost?
It does. So I bill every, everything, every single thing. Should we get that? Every cent. Um, outside of elections, we have the efficiency digitization project that we will complete in the upcoming fiscal year. We have postponed this project. Um, I can report, we have received um some benefit to postponing. We completed rigorous document parsing, which has been excellent. And there's recent changes in the retention schedules, the state of Michigan retention schedules, which has allowed us to already start digitizing and not requiring to keep the hard copy documents that we would have given over. So we look forward to completing that. And with that, I can answer any questions?
Sorry, I can't.
Right now, it's.
For, so we reduce some of our precincts, correct?
Correct.
For this, this will be the first. Are we able to reuse any of that equipment that we would have used at a different location that kinda, like I'm looking at um some of the while the laptops are one, or the polling booths?
The polling booths, um we definitely can. So with the consolidation, we would be able to complete the polling booth um purchases next fiscal year. We would need to maintain that. And then as far as the e-pull books, they're very, very outdated. So we, of course, could use some for backups. It was good to have backup, and the same with the equipment. We're um planning on having backup equipment. The tabulators, we go for backups.
Uh, so out of this three hundred and twenty nine and change, thousand dollars, what portion ballpark of that is unfunded? How much of that is like one time unfunded mandates? And what's our, our longer term? It's probably both for you and Mr. Johnson. Like, what's our longer term strategy? If like, we have these continual unfunded mandates that are gonna continue to eat into our reserves, how are we going to address those?
What I've seen here and elsewhere is the magnitude of all these unfundeds is still unknown. You know, so the six to ten days early voting and um, you know, the polling places, the cameras, the surveillance on the drop boxes, the, all of those things. Every time you turn around, there's another requirement, and they literally keep writing that. So we keep trying to quantify it, and that's why you see in the budget there, it, you know, two forty one is where we were before, three oh nine. Presidential elections are extremely costly, you know, that's why that's up there. And then we hope it's, it settles somewhere around the three sixteen where we are this year. But again, they keep writing the rules as far as you must do this, we must do that. So I still think we're a little bit away until we actually completely understand what we approved like two years ago, however long it's been, so.
And proposal twenty two is too, that was quite a hefty constitutional amendment. Um, I would say as a norm, you know, we don't normally have that large of an overhaul, including so many bills to implement, which then the unfunded.
Right, I mean, we have to do, that's not a, a choice.
Right, right.
But long term, it feels like, especially since they continue to get coming, we have to find ways in other areas or efficiencies. Because we don't have any money.
Right, absolutely. And we do constantly look for efficiencies. Um, for example, our current Dropbox um is grandfathered in, but we of course have the new state, which we are going to be putting out just for ballots. So we were able to find a location on city hall property that the police is already, that public safety is already monitoring. So that can be a great cost savings and having to, you know, additionally purchase and add on all of the surveillance videos. So I, we're constantly, I'm working with other directors, so that was something I talked with Stan and Alex about, and constantly looking for ways to mitigate the expenses.
Every time we think we have it, again, the election, we can't get it, so now they gotta be paid a little more, and then this supply is here, and then, oh, you have to maintenance agreements on this stuff for five years and cost a fortune. So, yeah, we keep trying, but right now it's really a mess.
I thank you, Your Honor. I just want to thank you and your, your team for uh for helping us with this, because, you know, voting is one of the most important civic responsibilities that residents have, and our municipality's job is to make that safe and efficient and effective for, for them. So what you're proposing makes a lot of sense. And you hinted at this, I'd just like to put a little exclamation point at the end, the partnership that you have with the other uh departments, you know, DPW and IT.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, with like, shuffling those machines around and doing all that stuff, making sure everything is safe and protected. I volunteered in many elections over the years and uh, back in the day anyway, and and I was always amazed at the caliber and quality of work that the, that the team does.
Absolutely.
Uh, and so, you know, those things, uh, it's like planning a good party. You don't know all the work that goes into it, if everything goes smoothly, right? Uh, and so this, this budget helps ensure that we'll have a smooth elections going forward, so.
Yeah, and the clerk's office, all of us in the office, um genuinely appreciate all the support from council.
Well, I would just like to tell you that um I appreciate your creativity and thinking, and I understand the magnitude of these unfunded mandates. We all value safe, secure elections. I was on, I had a call with the Secretary of State a couple of weeks ago, and one of the things that we, I did mention, these mandates, and while I was smiling and, yeah, and well, there is no solution right now. I, my goal was to at least plant a seed, because I think sometimes when you're the one saying, you know, this is happening and that's happening and that's happening, you're not fully understanding the impact that it's having on municipalities. Um, and not to say that they're not good, because they're all, the reasoning behind it's good. We want it safe, we want it fair, we want people to access, have access to the polls. All of those things are absolutely important and true. But the result is, you know, what we're faced with now. So thank you for meeting that challenge and continuing to be bright eyed about it as we move into the future. Okay, um.
My next finance, nothing to talk about here, though we go to Leo. Uh, so the quick overview of finance is uh the budget was put together. I know there's been some flux lately, so it includes the finance director position and the parts, the current part-time position for payroll and accounts payable has been turned into a full-time position effective I think this just this past month, with the goal of that being to eliminate some of the HR type functions or not eliminating, to remove or restructure some of the HR type functions that are being handled by Lori in the accounting position over to that to go with the payroll piece. So it'll be payroll slash HR. So those are the additional duties that she'll be taking on as she's full time. And really, most places that I'm at, I, those two can, uh positions are usually combined as a full time. So I think she still has some capacity to take on some of that HR stuff. Talking, speaking of Lori, she's retiring in August. So this budget assumes a replacement at her existing salary as well, so that process will take place. Um, obviously, there'll be payouts, remember, the, one of those strange accounting rules is that when people leave and they get paid off for their second vacation time, that's not budgeted, and so once that comes up, that's those are amendments that, that take place during the year. So um those are the, the key things there. Outside of that, there's that, all that, well, and us auditors, we went out to bid, and have the results sitting somewhere in the dust over at city hall. Uh, so new auditor recommendation will be coming for you. That's included there as well.
Sounds good. A note on the constables or the benefits, benefits administration slash constable, that position had been full time. We had worked to try to see if we could uh through efficiencies and technology, uh bring that down to a part-time position. We'd attempted that for several months uh, um since Sir Redden exited the organization uh, and we did find that ultimately the workload justified um going beyond the twenty eight hours that we have. Uh, there really isn't a, anything between twenty eight hours and forty hours under our merit system. So that was not a newly created full-time position. Uh, that was an existing full-time position that we had high hopes for, but ultimately decide, uh said, no, we do need to uh keep this as a full-time position. Um, so I just want to make that note.
That's all I got. Any questions?
Thank you.
Perfect.
Great, great. Yeah, the, so I, I was at the legal portion of it. Uh, this is a fairly, fairly small area. Uh, we did roll back the amount slightly on the city attorney work. That was to be consistent with the historical average that we've had. We traditionally had put one thirty in there, sort of looking at come what may, uh and then rolling that back down through the budget amendment process. We thought it was more appropriate to mirror this to the historical average that we've had. That way it didn't tie up resources in an account uh where we could potentially put them elsewhere. Uh, one thing you do see an increase in though, uh ten thousand for the labor, the labor attorney portion of this. I'm sorry, uh, yeah, ten thousand for labor attorney. Uh, as you know, we do segment those two sections. It's a different firm, a different attorney that handles both of those. Uh, I didn't want to call that out specifically uh because we do anticipate contract negotiations uh occurring in uh twenty six, I'm sorry, twenty five and uh twenty six. So based on existing la, uh legal labor agreements, uh you'll see uh that money allocated there so that we properly allocate for the uh labor attorney's time. He has a big hand in those conversations.
And that's.
And the attorney's not on a retainer, it's as need, so it can, can fluctuate as that stuff comes up. What are going on?
Court adjourned.
City Hall, City Hall, then outstanding, they cut the budget one point nine, no, oh, treasurer, skip. Yes, how dare us switch, skip the treasurer, sorry.
Basically, for treasury, we're pretty much as stands, we're always in you know, just a set function where we're collecting monies and keeping our staff trained, so you can answer questions to the public and be prepared with the right answers and that kind of thing. So pretty much what you see is, is just being, being the staff that we have in, in training, specific screening for treasury.
The, the organization of treasurer deputy uh officer, uh front counter clerk, that has uh, that's worked really well. It provides adequate coverage for Brian. It covers a little bit redundancy. And um he, he's got more of a backup now with the deputy position uh in place. And then the front office or the counter, counter clerk uh is, is really useful in handling the day to day, interacting with the, the residents too.
Any questions for Mr. Williams?
It all adds up.
Yeah.
Alright, City Hall, there is the one that uh, they did such a great job, they cut one point nine million dollars out of their budget. Because they didn't want to, they didn't want to talk. So remember, the, the big piece of that deduction is one point eight for the HVAC system. And to the extent that's not incurred before you're in, that'll be a rollover budget amendment that goes to you next year. In addition to that, that's one of those four departments that see, saw a reduction because of the new facilities department, which is right underneath it. So keep that in mind as well. That's why the norm would have been that four fifty number that you see over there. But the one timers for the HVAC as well as moving some of those costs into facilities is why it's, it's so.
If we roll, roll that one point eight million forward, one point nine, it's probably gonna be rolled over into facilities, not City Hall.
Yeah, that would make the most sense, yeah. Yeah, because we would assign, we would, the amendment would come to you with an account number on it, so it doesn't matter where it was, it'll, it could be rebudgeted. Mr. City Hall, who is Mr. City Hall getting tough?
Um, no, I will say, a lot of this, uh, whether, although we have broken out facilities, uh, a lot of this, the, what is left in City Hall, and it really should be City Hall slash citywide projects, but uh a lot of these are still managed by Alex Brown in his broad role as facilities manager. Uh, so you'll see um some of those items reflected. He'll work out of both those funds in addition to his more specific, more capital weighted uh facilities budget.
Facilities. Again, the key with the facilities is the moving of all of those numbers that I laid out, so, and I'll let Alex think.
Yeah, as Carl had kind of alluded to, a lot of these numbers are moved out of different departments and kind of moved into one general fund now for me to work out of without um having to go back and forth with different departments, say, hey, is this okay to approve? Should we do this project? Kind of still have the communication, but kind of streamline the process a little. Um, it's a lot of, a lot of basic stuff is custodial services, janitor, uh janitorial supplies, general building maintenance, fire extinguisher inspections, uh suppression system inspection, stuff like that. Um, some of the bigger stuff, obviously, is gonna be some of the capital stuff that's gonna go on with the City Hall and uh the library, uh with some of the big ones, parking lot projects, uh some elevator projects here, public safety waterproofing. Um, those are the big ones. BPW's got some bigger projects with um wall replacement and expansion and some new uh stairs in the, the garage area that need to be replaced. Those are kind of the bigger, high level things that are gonna be happening on the capital side. Um, and then just the basic day to day kind of maintenance, runs the hardware store, supplies and tools, stuff like that.
Thank you. So uh, Alex, can you speak to uh the energy loan revolving fund contribution? Um, is that going to be something where it's just specifically related to City Hall, or is that something that's gonna be spread out over the?
That'll be, yeah, I see it's under City Hall here. It's gonna be kind of just for anything energy related. I'm kind of the liaison to that side of the project to the, I don't know my official title, but something.
Something green, yeah.
Uh, yeah, that'll be kind of for anything energy related. If we do citywide, and then monies from, that we save will be pushed back in that fund to create a larger fund. To keep that going.
Yeah, this is something we had talked about for quite a while now. Yeah, and I, I'm, I'm very happy to see it in here, so thank you for that, first of all. Um, can we talk to a little bit more of the, kind of the, the future plans that might be associated with this as well? So we've seen a little bit of energy savings on some of the other improvements that we've made so far.
Right.
Including, I'm assuming that this twenty thousand is gonna include some of the savings from the HVACs.
Yeah, I mean, some of the HVAC stuff will be significant savings. Um, the LED conversion, we're starting to reap some of those benefits as well. And then, um, I would assume, I don't know, probably some of the money from the EV chargers at some point, once if we start to break a little more than even on those, and probably get kicked into that as well.
Okay, and then in terms of going forward, kind of next potential projects that we want to.
Next project, moving forward with that. I don't have um anything specific right now. I'm kind of working through that plan and uh we'll have some, I can provide some greater details, a little closer to those.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah.
LED lights too, LED light conversions. We've converted not just our buildings, uh but we've finished our stadiums, our stadium lighting as well.
All the touch points, everything too.
A, a big update to those facilities.
Yeah. Great, thank you both.
Yeah, um, let's talk about the library, parking lot and carpet. So uh is how necessary is that right now? Either of those.
I mean, I, I think the parking lot is, I don't want to, I don't like to use the word necessary, but I don't want to get into a position where we're paying so much more because we let it degrade so far. And I've come across a lot of it since I've been here, and it's just, I'm seeing the cost spending that the stuff we're spending more money on because we've let it go to such disrepair and get into a bad shape. So I'd like to get ahead of it a little and, and do it uh on the lighter side. And I mean, I know a hundred thousand dollars on the lighter side, but I think doing it a little more preventatively than reactively would be. Get ahead of it a little and and do it uh on the lighter side, and I mean, I know a hundred thousand dollars on the lighter side, but I think doing it a little more preventatively than reactively would be beneficial.
It would, it would be a, so for the parking lot, it would be a cost savings over the long term.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, I I think so.
Rates much more.
Yeah.
And 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 if you visited, the one of the issues we have is it needs to be regraded towards the drainage, we've got areas that are running water. Where water sits and settles on there, which is causing um and causes and will ca- continue to cause issues uh with the pavements, uh. So remind, that's a part of this as well as making sure that it is properly draining and it does not hold water anywhere, so some of the cost is.
Regrading, which I have to deal with. Um. Now, the library carpet, that first, that's a staggering amount. Yeah. For carpet, but um. I don't know that that's necessary right now.
So, yeah, so I I feel those, I feel it's worth bringing forward to council for your uh for your consideration. The carpet we have in there, and Master Church is here as well, so I don't want to speak over top of him. Uh, but in my conversation with him, that's something that we have been trying to get done for quite a while. If you're, if you're entering into the library and you walk to the adult section, uh, you'll see there's a a contrast between the purple section and the blue section. The blue section was done about fifteen years ago, the purple section was done about twenty five years ago. So uh, when they went to re-carpet fifteen years ago, they specifically cut out the section that had the stacks. Because it was just so labor intensive to try to do, uh, so they pushed it and they pushed it, um. We we feel it is really past the point where we want to continue to do so. Part of the the cost on that uh is because of the labor and. Uh, moving those stacks back and forth to carpet and then moving it back and into place there. Um, again, I, we always hope that um that that number comes in much lower, that it's not that we have um over budgeted ideally. Uh, in the uh southern plan budget, but we feel like that is a safe number from what we're, from the feedback that we're getting now, um. That we've added incrementally to that cost every time we've deferred it. So it it really, it's a good moment to caps or good moment to point out, things get more expensive as you push them back.
Talking about an eyesore, is this something at the average? Library or C?
I mean, I I do think it shows its age, uh, and Matt and I, I don't want to overtalk, I mean, I don't know if kind of you get, but uh, yeah, when you go in there, I do feel like they certainly does show its age.
So uh, parking lot would be like the next fiscal year, so we'd be looking at another fiscal year beyond that. So like from now, it would be probably two years, of course. The condition, not improve over the next two years, be regular, maybe two carpet. Twice a year, so maintain it, that way as much as we can. We have re-carpeted some areas in the building, so maybe. The storage time room, so it's possible that we'll be looking at the split core part of the vault area and moving through. That we can see um positively over cost, but again, we're trying to predict something like two years out, so uh it could just end up being a wash.
Then I. We had an editorial arrived that passed, I think. It would be the time to look at this, this one, I think, is. One we can safely defer, I feel.
I have a.
Yes.
Sorry, I'm trying to follow the order. So there's also noted the four study rooms to build, that would also be. I don't know, I didn't line up quite as well in mine. But would it be better to do the carpet after those, so that way we're not putting in carpet to rip up, to put a study room in? I mean, we might want a different vinyl or something in those studies.
Yeah, I think that could be maybe tie those two kind of together, if we're gonna um kind of push those down the road a little bit, I think that could be like. Bumped into maybe one big project, if we're gonna have carpet ripped up, it'd probably be an ideal time to do that construction.
Right.
Um, I don't want to speak from that, but I think that makes the most sense statistically and if this.
The study room projects has always been like more of a dream project, so it's something that might just be funded, it's something. Obviously, it happens at the library, but in terms of like core function, the parking lot and the carpet would take, take the priority. So there's definitely value in the study room project, but it's not, you know, currently in the pocket. Next to square year, square year after.
And if we install car uh study rooms, would we rent those to like if it's an outside, uh? We talked before, it's like tutors come in and things of that nature, could we rent them?
Uh, you could, most, most libraries, they're just, you know, like, I want to be this so and so, can I, can I sign an outline? Or or I need someplace quiet to make the home followers, zoom interview or something like that. So most of them are just, there's comfort or priority, but they're considered or something like that.
Yeah, I think on the study rooms, I think some of our confusion here is there's um. Slist is twenty five, twenty six in our line by line, but has zero.
The department, I was just gonna clarify that, the department had recommended doing it there, but it did not get funded. So that's why.
Yeah, and in the CIP, it's.
The only thing that was.
Twenty uh six, twenty seven.
Right, yes.
That's a different.
Yeah, originally it was proposed by the department head for the carpet and the study rooms, but only the purpose. That's what, so, yeah, we just had just clarified parking lot for twenty four, twenty five next fiscal year. And then the two years out, which again will be brought back to you, is the re-carpeting.
Yeah, I feel comfortable with proceeding this cycle, this next cycle with the parking. That's important, drainage, safety, and all that, so I I think this is what I agree.
Clarence.
This makes sense.
Jess.
Right.
I'm good, party.
Well, good.
Okay, and then year two, do you, are you leaving that, or are you, that is the uh carpet in year two? So the proposed budget right now has carpeting in year two.
And I want to underscore Carl, so that that would come back to you next fiscal year for consideration as well.
We'll get to revisit this and things might be.
I mean, you can leave it as a placeholder, we can discuss them.
I like it cuz, you know, the budgets reflect our priorities, right, so having this here indicates that it is something that we think will add value and benefits the community and uh. Um, and yet we're not funding it this this upcoming cycle. Early on, you mentioned that that one particular column is what we're focusing on, and it's good to have insight into where we're thinking into the future. You know, so.
Yeah, yeah, think of it this way too, so it under facilities here, the hundred, the parking lots here and the carpeting is there. So that means it's funded, when you look at the total, it's a balanced budget and that is funded. So if ultimately next year you come back and say, I don't want to do that project, I want to do another project, or just eliminate it. You've got a hundred twenty five to the good, and then again, that'll come back to you. So we'll make note on our end too, to make sure we're having discussions with you guys before the budget starts next year on, is that still a priority or is it?
And Director Church, if that's still a priority um for you as well, yeah.
So i- in this facility sort of area, it's not on the line by line, it's it's so far out, but um. Parks and Rec Building Repair South East will separate, um, is for twenty twenty seven, and my question is. Can we wait that long?
Yeah.
What are the consequences if there's some sort of failure, or then should we be doing that like right now? Taking care of that now?
That's gonna be funded through the grant, we we want for the community center, it's paid for the roof, they'll be paying for that repair, new, new front doors, community center and. Uh, I believe some parking, yeah, the roof and parking lot repairs there, yeah, so that's actually gonna be taken care of. Within this, probably in the next fiscal year with the grant money we received.
Okay.
So moving that far down the line, yeah, I didn't know it was that far down, but yeah, we're gonna have that taken care of sooner than later, that's one of the priorities with that grant money.
But that is really the only reason we're able to address this this quickly, is because of the state allocation that I received.
Okay. Um, then that leads into additional comment, but CIP and CERP are. Kind of a disaster, they're, they cannot match on a lot of things, and so it's. You know, if if it had lined up in the right place, I mean, you know, that would have been a question.
Part of what we like from a time, uh, from a process standpoint of bringing this to you this early, is any changes that are made this evening can be reflected in those documents. CIP does go before Planning Commission, CERP is an internal guide that we use for planning ahead. Um, but based on our conversation this evening, we have uh time to update that before ultimately comes back to council.
And I'm glad the wall's not falling.
Uh, yeah.
It it is worth noting, it it's not, it's not the upcoming fiscal year, but in this fiscal year, we just completed a uh uh. Replacement of the seal or the roof on the community center, the only reason we were able to do that project as well is because of allocation, that same allocation from the state.
And I would also like to point out that our community center is a twenty five year building that has just celebrated its fiftieth birthday. So um. It really is. It has served us well beyond its true lifespan, it's an embarrassing, my opinion, um. Place in our, in our community, and I think that I'm grateful that we got these grand dollars so that we can make the necessary repairs, but. I just, you know, I look at Mr. McBen and and all the, your staff and all the incredible programs that you run out of that space. It's um truly a miracle, and I appreciate your determination to to keep those things running. But I think we we, and this isn't the moment, but we definitely need to take a a hard look at that, is is that. Reflective of what our values are as a community, um, so and and obviously conversation, conversation for another day. But I think this is a moment to shine a light on and and highlight some of the the things that, you know, our departments have been doing, I mean. I, you know, hobbling together radios and public safety, I mean, Stan is a magician with IT, and I could go on and on through all the departments and I'm. Grateful for all that you do, but I think that we as a community, community need to really um reflect on. What our values are moving forward, so anyway, I'm off my soapbox for now, um.
It's like, yeah, we can only play the MacGyver cards when we talk.
Right, I mean, yeah, and anyway, I'm I'm not gonna wind up again, so um. Were we good with facilities, are we? Moving on to.
Planning would be next.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Welcome.
Hiya.
Um, so planning and I'll just kind of riddle over into inspections of that building too. Uh, our pretty status quo, there's a couple of things that I wanted to highlight, you'll notice in the planning budget, we have some money for contractual services. We're partnering with TPW to get some imaginary and design standards together, that is something here sorely lacking and it became very evident. That development stuff in the community and also as we've gotten to the normal one, uh, zoning ordinance, pretty great. Travel plug again is available for you to review on the Google Drive. Um, there's also some contractual services budgeted, now with the implementation of the parking study recommendations, so one of those things was. At least quarterly parking counts on all of our municipal lots and residential streets, so there's some software available that can help us with that. And that can also help us plan ahead as new development comes in, we can play around with different numbers. And see how that would affect our needed parking spaces, so you'll see that in round two. The continued utilization of the planning consultant, there's gonna be a lot of implementation we have to do with the new zoning ordinance that we hope to have adopted in the August timeframe. Um, so there's quite a bit of that, and then I expect we'll be tweaks and adjustments we have to make as we, as we start to implement that. And then uh I hope to get our C certification wrapped up this year too. So the zoning ordinance was the big lift for that, and that opens up additional grant funding dollars for us through the MEDC. There are a number of other documents that we have to do, an economic development strategy, a guide to economic incentives and a marketing plan, but I hope to have our planning consultant help with um as well. And then the last thing um that I wanted to highlight in planning was the money for the BSNA online implementation. We are planning tentatively to look at going live in the July, August timeframe, at least with the start of that, but it's gonna be a phased in process. Also, there are some additional hours we need to work with BSNA on the implementation of that. Would you prefer that I pause here or talk about inspections slash building too?
Pause for one second, will any questions about BSNA or what's been said to this moment, cuz it's a lot, yeah.
Yeah, no, no uh questions, but just a compliment on on all that a lot that was just talked about, right? You know, the the zoning work is is a remarkable overhaul and the tremendous amount of teamwork and. And leadership that you've provided and and to help steer this is is remarkable. And just to take note of the amount of development that is happening in our community, and that's a sign of. The the progress and the growth and the desirability of of Berkeley, and it's because of the hard work of you and the other departments have created this. The space where folks want to invest, wants to be here, you know, so it's it's. Encouraging to hear these kinds of things are are what we're, what we need to focus on, because it's, that's a good place to be. Uh, so obviously lots of work to do and we need to have the proper tools and processes and resources to be successful in that, but I really am. Excited with what we've heard, uh, I think these are appropriate, reasonable, uh, and looking forward to what comes next.
So um, my comment is, I appreciate the heavy lift that that so many ordinance rewrite is. But I, one of my, and and you know this because we've had many conversations, my um pet peeves is our. You know, our zoning and ordinances and how they really don't reflect our master plan and and they're out of sync, and so I really appreciate. Uh, you setting that as a priority for uh your department, because it will benefit the city greatly in the big picture and will um. Positively affect growth and development. When you uh are talking about BSNA, which modules do you use, and maybe Stan might want to do the part two of this question? What are the modules that are specific to community development and which ones are used departmental or across all departments?
So we mainly live in the building module.
Okay.
Um, in community development, and there's an online uh interface that comes with that of the public.
Okay.
Um, and the the cost comes in with BSNA coming in and writing all of the. Yeah, online understanding, so Stan might be saying the code or programming or whatever it is that they curiously type. To make sure that the building module that we have there connects with the online module that our customers will see. And it's about a two or three day rewrite, and then there's a whole bunch of, now we're gonna go live and this, this.
Yes.
You need your help.
And oh no, the default went here, oh, okay. Um, okay, and do you currently use timesheets um in the BSNA module?
Yes, so we use, I mean, we use the things that all of the.
Then everybody, okay, perfect, perfect.
Ledger, all of those, but.
But in addition, you'll be the building module as well.
And we have the building module internally now.
Got it.
Open up to external base.
Got it, thank you. Okay, any other questions? Okay, proceed please.
So there's really not a whole lot for me to highlight in the inspection slash building. Generally, that that's a pretty static for us, for us, you will notice um that you will see the full reflection of transitioning to. In-house building officials, that I'm having all of those services provided by the cap.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Thank you.
That's it? Come on. Actually, I love it.
We're on a roll.
Keep moving, keep moving. All right, community promotion.
Okay, so the community promotion budget, uh, small but mighty, I'll say. It pays for things like community events, um, including the city's portion of Berkeley Days and volunteer luncheon that we do each year to celebrate our wonderful volunteers in the city. Um, our Berkeley High School Scholarship and also the printing and mailing of the Berkeley Buzz. Um, it remains largely unchanged from what was approved in previous years, but I will continue to evaluate to see if the larger or smaller allocation is necessary. In the school years, I don't really have a ton of highlight in that one.
Thank you.
For for those watching, um, uh, it is, Community Promotions has a dedicated revenue source. It's a millet rate that's calibrated to raise specifically uh fifty thousand dollars a year. And that's a number that dates all the way back to the early nineteen hundreds in a state statute that was passed, uh, like nineteen nineteen, something like that. Uh, so that's why you you'll see that number stays pretty consistent year over year, uh, if not, you'll see it fall a little bit, uh, that's. We try to tailor it very specifically into the fifty thousand dollars raised by that millet.
And I just have one question, so the buzz comes out of this. Hold on.
Um, yes.
And is there any way we can, maybe, and this doesn't have to be tonight, but like see how much value that's adding, or if there's a cheaper option?
I I can definitely look into it, um, I don't have an answer.
No, no, I didn't expect it, but it's just, I mean, that's almost thirty thousand a year.
Yes, the cost and the mail cost does really add up.
I just don't know how much value it adds.
Definitely evaluate.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor, to to that point, I think, um, it's kind of, uh, part of the buzz is to create buzz in the community. And anecdotally, I've heard many folks provide positive feedback about the new buzz, it's still kind of new. Cuz it used to be this old kind of like tissue paper sort of thing that.
Stained together.
Together with fine print and all that kind of stuff.
The Parks and Recreation Department used to do it on their own, and I think.
Oh, sure, and and no, and and no fault, I mean. Literally. They're they're pressing the paper themselves. They're, they're pressing the paper themselves. It was on the cheap. And it does, you know, it certainly people were able to sign up for programs and things. But the, 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 the new approach here, I think, is it reflects positively upon our community. The mayor mentioned earlier about the eyesore that are the, the actual, I'm sorry, our community center is. Um, this at least helps provide, um, an in-home contact to, to better reflect. What our community is and what we strive to be, you know, and so I certainly would support looking at any way to, to streamline the costs. Maybe there's some different printing options or things like that, but. You know, I'd love to see that kind of a program continue, um, because of just the imagery and, and the value that it, it brings to the. That sense of belonging and sense of desire, uh, that it offers.
If I could just, I wasn't asking to cut out communication to all the residents. Maybe a different style, put it in the Woodward talk that's mailed already, take on that, something. A little bit cheaper of an option that gives you the same result.
I think Dan and Matt could probably speak to this most directly, but I, I do. Feel like in conversation with them, and don't really as it is, that they do feel enough, see enough ticket and registrations for their programming after the buzz hits homes. So we. Getting to them, getting to people, maybe even something tactile, uh, there's, we have seen value in that. It's right in line with what community promotions, uh, the intent of that, uh. That, that over a hundred year old law at this point.
Yeah. I mean, I, I mean, that's a belabor the point, but it's like historical committee loves the fact that they now have an outlet to, to reach out to the community, which wasn't available before. And if we just haven't had in the time, in the talk or something, we wouldn't have a section, you know, that kind of stuff. Uh, Matt, I love your essays. I look forward to, um, if you have, if you've already penned your final one. Uh, it would be, uh, I, I look forward to, I, I look forward to that every issues.
Well, so thank you.
Stuff. So I appreciate that.
Caitlin, is, is there a. Knowing, knowing that you are a lover of technology, um, you envision a, is a more digital buzz?
We do offer it online. Um, however, there is a lot of value in having that nicely delivered directly to homes because then people can. Look through it. They can keep it out for the whole season when they want to check into what's available in the city. Um, and we do have a lot of residents who. Aren't maybe the most tech savvy or just choose to not, uh, go online and prefer to have the printed copy. But I will, I can definitely look into maybe making that a little bit more robust and seeing if there's a different printer that we can use to minimize those costs.
Well, is there, is there a cost savings? So like, like. For teenagers basically, so they don't read anything that's not littered in the screen. They're probably watching this screen. Is there a way that maybe with the new website that people can, you know, like opt in, opt out, like with state, it's right?
That's, that's a great, that's a great opportunity.
And then that way we don't waste the paper to homes.
Sure.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Like it's a default that you get it and then you put in there, hey.
Yes, if you don't want the paper copy.
Right.
Absolutely. I like that.
The Parks Rec does the, um, senior newsletter as well. And that's, that's an option. They pay us.
That's memorable, honey. Do we have any kind of opportunity with especially as many local businesses as we have to sell like advertisements, something like that in the back that would maybe help offset. The cost of that. And I could see where if you had like. Here's your pet training and then the pet store is maybe, you know, advertising on that same page to, uh, the, the pet cuisine. Yeah. To be clear, that's, that's definitely an option. You know, and then it could also help just bolster awareness of some of the businesses, give them some, you know, like really broad. Advertising at potentially a low cost and help, you know, kind of keep the printed cost minimal.
Yes, I definitely like the opportunity to look into. I do, I feel like it could change the tone of the buzz if it has advertisements in it that some folks may not like. Um, however, that seems to be what we need for the cost savings. Um, that definitely is, they all look into.
And, and we're not looking to, to cut the mileage that Matt described at the onset, right? I mean, that's, that money is there. We're just trying to be as efficient.
Absolutely.
Right.
Mr. McMen.
So if I can just add one thing, in the Parks and Recreation area of, we do accept ads for. Uh, local community and sports organization groups. I will say, if we do start taking ads, it will add more pages. Which is going to increase your cost.
Gotcha.
Um, that is something that we, when we did that internally to Parks Rec. We noticed we would take ads, but it would add more pages. And with a publication like this, you have to do them in sets of four to make the front and back. Um, so adding ads can take you from sixteen to twenty to twenty-four pages. Cause that increases the cost of the overall publication.
Yeah, thank you.
That is true. But there could be a potential to offset that. Um, I like these options.
Just to play with, yeah.
Ben?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Sweet boring stuff. Insurance.
So insurance is a horrible description.
Yeah.
Uh, it's actually retiring.
Yeah. So you're, you're. Yeah, just budget department two fifty-four, ten of seventy-four on the line by line and wanted to call attention, which. What exactly we're talking about?
Yeah, it's our, it's our retiree benefits, payment in lieu, dental health, et cetera, and the general related pension contribution. So. Not a whole lot to, to talk to inflationary increases for a lot. The big wild card here is the service. Time purchase. So when anybody opts to purchase time, they pay a portion and we pay a portion. So you could see. Two hundred forty-one thousand one year, twenty-two thousand the next, hundred thirty the next. So, um, estimated high hoping lower in the subsequent year, but. It's really a wild card, you know, so I took the average and put that in there. But outside of that. Um, healthcare costs overall have been really good. So being self-insured for a lot of it, uh, obviously we have, um. The Medicare advantage for the over sixty-five, but the pre-sixty-five and the actives, which we'll go over next. Um, we're being self-insured, we're actually running slightly less than last year. Figure that out and healthcare costs continue to go up, but knock on wood. We're actually running slightly less than our actual last year and the projections were substantial increases, you know, budget wise. So. Twenty-four will be a good year and that's when a lot of the foundations were, were starting next year's budget as well.
Mayor, I may have two supplemental items. Um, it's just worth noting that since part of this require, uh, covers retiree benefits for, uh, individuals. You know, the health insurance OPAB, uh, it's always important to keep in mind that we discontinued that for new hires, uh, well over, at this point, I think sixteen years ago. Uh, so you do see that this is, uh, a finite group. Uh, it's not something that we keep continuing to add to, uh, and obviously is that. Population, uh, ages or experience changes and, uh, you could see that shrink over time. It has yet to happen. It's been offset by retiree healthcare. Costs, but, uh, the, either the, a finite population, uh, that would be shrinking on a, on a long enough timeline to say it nicely. Uh, second item here is that, uh, we have not yet seen the results of the, uh, protecting MI pension grant. Uh, which did offer from the state, uh, million dollar infusion into the city's specific, uh, MERS pension grant. That, uh, because of way, because of when they hand out the evaluations for that, uh, it would be applied to the. Our balance as of twelve thirty-one of twenty-three, but we don't see the valuation of that. That report doesn't come out until. May or so, so we, we're probably in the next months or so. Then we'll see the fruits of that labor. We're hoping to see that amount, uh. Jump up well, uh, above sixty percent. Uh, we'd applied for about half a million dollars worth. Based on the state's own calculation that would have gotten us two sixty. We were awarded nearly twice, uh, what we asked for. So we would like to see that go above sixty percent. Uh, but hopefully that does impact our ability to pay off that obligation over time.
And I appreciate that comment, uh, commentary too, because a lot of times I think. It's really not understood that because you get a, you get awarded a grant, but it's sometimes a long time.
Yes.
Before the, the dollars are actually. In our, um, accounts. And so, you know, it can, it can take.
Yes.
A long time.
And this one was unique as it did not route through the city. Uh, so the state made a direct allocation into the, our pension system specific to the city. Uh, but we don't see, you don't see a million dollars come in and a million dollars payment went out.
Got it.
Uh, it was unique and that was a direct infusion.
Thank you. Yeah.
Yeah. If insurance isn't a great name, can we rename it? You know, it's like your retiree insurance.
Even, yeah, even retiree benefits or something like that.
And, um, uh, same sort of comment with City Hall, if, you know, we mentioned that's not a, a great name for that fund. It's more like. I don't know, municipal services or city, yeah. So same sort of idea. Maybe it's something that's more clear.
So retiree benefits for insurance, what do we want to call City Hall? This is a.
Citywide projects.
Projects, yeah. Cause any, some people look at that, oh, look at. City Hall. Building their palace. Inspection to become building too.
That's another one I make here.
You, a link, a link, just called building?
Yeah, inspection to our building. All right. And then again, just as regarding active employee benefits, same concept. Two fifty-two here. This is the active employees, payment in lieu, dental, health vision, retirement contributions, MERS, et cetera. Uh, so again, you could see our projected activity there, the nine eleven. That's where I'd say we were at six seventy-two last year. We're running slightly less than that right now and our current year projected budget was nine eleven. That's why when I talk about amending the budget, we might be even in a better position in the current fiscal year, because I don't ever come anywhere close to nine eleven. So took the projected and then melted up by inflationary to get to those two. But again. Running, that's why you see almost no increase from the projected activity occurring here is because we're running so well in the current state. So. The two hour years were in pretty spiced up, in pretty great shape. Great change.
And we continue to get quarterly updates from Gallagher, uh, to report on our experience with our self-insured plan.
And we may even see more improvements if we, if the consortium.
Yes.
That we're looking at. What's that advantageous?
At least. I will see improvements, but hopefully you'll see a little more smoothing.
Yes, that's what I was gonna say. Yeah, yeah. Well, very unlikely to go backwards, but, uh, the lower increases year over year.
All right, good with those?
Yes.
All right. Corona, long gone. Um, page two, almost done, halfway through the general fund. Again, this is, I expect the other funds though go a lot faster because again, it took a little. You know, talk about the free funds and, and other funds, the whole line. This is our main operating fund right here. So once we get through this, it will be great shape. So. Public safety has like fifty-five departments or something here. So they get the floor for as long as they like.
Um, really this is a maintenance budget. You know, we weren't looking to do a lot of new, uh, new things. I think the budget reflects that. This is kind of the cost of doing business. Like everybody else, our prices have gone up. As a matter of fact, we were researching to have our, uh, our open house before we had to cancel this last year and, uh. Like the bones house went up almost double. So it was absolutely ridiculous. So I actually called the guy and I'm like, what's up with your price increase? Is that even played?
Oh.
Jeez. He just built Seabaker's heart.
That was for you. It didn't really happen. I just made that up. Or really, um, I just have a couple of things to, uh, you know, as, as mandatory recruitment and retention is very, very difficult. In all city services, but particularly in law enforcement, the fire service. And even more difficult in public safety because we ask them to do three, uh, specialized things. Um, looking at the admin, uh, the admin, uh, line. That was, that main increase is because we, you know, we anticipated when our body worn cameras program started that we'd need our FOIA technician to be full time. We tried to go part-time and her hours were maxed out and in a real poor period of time. So we kind of saw that coming. We knew it was coming. Besides that, we have the, uh, even on the fun, the theme of unfunded mandates. We had, uh. Um, the clean slate log gave us about fifteen thousand records we needed to expund and we're not even done those yet. And some of them were simple. The recent ones were pretty simple because if you got those, the other ones we had to go back and find. So. Um, Amy and Mary both have been working on those. Um, so that's a huge job for, for them. And, uh. Amy is just an absolute machine, our, our, our full-time FOIA technician. We lost our time dispatcher, but we gained a full-time FOIA technician. So that's the increase in administration. Really everything else is pretty steady, um, in our operations right now. On paper, we're down four positions, but we're really down seven. We have, uh. One in the academy, one we just offered a job to, they'll start the police academy in May, and then we have three more openings. Um, we also have a dispatch opening that's coming up, um, in June. So we're working on trying to fill that. And we have two people up on, uh, surgery soon. So. We're really struggling right now. Um, we're short detective, just to keep that, that position on the road. So, um. That's why you'll see our overtime. Actually, it's not as high as I thought it would be, quite honestly. Um, and this week, just about the whole week, we went with no overtime other than Monday. Um, but really if anybody's off for training or time off, if we can't fill it with one of the swing positions, we're, we're paying overtime. So that's really the theme. For public safety. Um, if there's any questions, anything specific, I'd be more than happy to answer.
I just, all right. When was the last time we were up to full capacity?
Good question. I, it's probably been several years, but we're not unique in that. Um, you know, I, I go to meetings with other chiefs and directors. And. For the lack of a term, some of these cities are just absolutely throwing money at, to, to get people. Um, and we've lost some of our people, other cities because of that. I think the contract, um. Did we call moderation? That's going to help us a lot. We're already, uh, we're already hearing, uh, some more interest than we had before. And same thing to dispatch too. We actually have some experienced. Uh, candidates that have applied and actually will be doing interviews in this from viral.
Great.
Um. So that'll help us a lot. Our goal, we like the mixture of newer officers that we kind of built from scratch, for lack of a better term. And experienced, and we, we've gotten quite a few experienced public safety officers that are helping us a ton. And, uh. We're really hoping those three positions. It'd be really nice if we could get three experienced public safety officers. And, and I get, I started this job in nineteen. I'm like pension, who cares? Health insurance, who cares? It's kind of back to that now. Um, they want to see that dollar, that dollar amount is what they're looking at. You have to. We try to explain to them and you have to look at the big picture. And I think big picture wise, we're in good shape, but things are looking at that dollar amount, but the, the top pay.
I think it's also important to note or to remind people that it's. Each of our officers are trained in, you know, public safety, fire and medical.
Medical, yes.
So when you even, when you look at the salaries and you think it's a incredible value for the skill level that we get. For the dollar amount that we're paying. And I know that that is a cost savings to the city. If you had a separate police department and a separate fire department. So. Having that combined along with the medical is. A savings to taxpayers for sure, but I think we can't underestimate the value that each of the officers brings to the table.
And Nate and I were talking about that today. For city, our size, it works really well.
It does. It for sure does.
Yeah. And I would say credit to both of our bargaining units as well, uh, who have. But as they, as we talk about what a comparable department is to this one, uh, they're. Very open and, and fully supportive of us looking at police specific departments, uh, from wage comparables. They're not, they're never insisted on saying only public safety. Uh, which we know frankly, um, some of there are municipalities out there, as Chief Gaines said, that compensate their officers as if they're three people in one. Um, our, our unions have said they're very happy and the way that they're provided for and they've only looked for. Um, small increases here and there, right? One of which was reflected in the council's action, uh, two weeks ago.
Thank you.
Oh, Council. Uh, so I think it's great that we have an opportunity to, uh, you know, we think about recruiting and retaining talent, like to recruit some of these younger PSOs. To come, put them through the academy, all of that. Um, but we also have some then we've made an incredible investment in time and money and then they leave. So. Are we exploring any options for where, like I think about my own employer and a lot of corporations, if they're going to pay for me to go to school, I have either if I leave right after. You know, I have some kind of either golden handcuffs or, you know, clause of repayment. Are we exploring any of that so that we can not just recruit, but actually retain some of that talent in the area?
Yes. And I like, I like the term gold handcuffs because it kind of fits.
And I did not even.
Yes, uh, you know, in, in really, you know, one of our younger PSOs, he got, he was doing very well and just decided, you know, law enforcement part just wasn't for him. And quite honestly, we don't want somebody like that here, uh, because he wasn't happy and eventually that'll show to the public. Um, there is a new, there, we were, we were prohibited from doing that on the law enforcement side. There was a law that was passed about a year and a half ago, and I should back up to the funding on the law enforcement side, uh. There was a thirty million dollar grant in, in unlike most grants, it's like two pages. It's, it's very, very simple. So we're giving twenty-four thousand dollars reimbursement for everyone we set it up, which is the maximum we can. Um, so that part helps and kind of on a side note too, that's down to about nine million dollars. So we'd like our local state legislator to, legislation to, uh, allocate some more funds there because it helps a, a ton. And I've talked to Senator McMurro about maybe trying to do on the, on the, on the fire side also. Cause we're not only paying, you know, quite honestly, the, the academies themselves are. Six thousand and three thousand and two thousand for the medical first responder, but we're paying them to be there.
Right.
Um, so yes, it, it, uh, so we, we. Um, so yes, it it uh, so we we do, starting the la- our last uh, our um. PSO lining, who's in the police academy right now, she was the first one that signed the waiver saying that if she left, and it is optional. You know, if 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 somebody goes to another department, it's different than just saying, I can't do this job.
Correct.
You know, you don't want to, uh, and it was mostly for the uh, you know, I've I've heard stories that uh. Uh, people send Troy Police Academy, and a chief of the side would jump up on the stage and get a picture with them, because they were taking them. You know, the next week or two, um, so that is a problem in our profession, and in this area, we all talk, we all get along well, um. And some of the officers that have left, uh, they did it for the right reasons, they weren't, you know, money is good, but. You know, one wanted to move back up north where he's from, and uh, um. And another one just, quite honestly, wanted to want to be busier, and uh, it's kind of the grass always greener, but uh. That's why we really, really spend the time to get the right people for the job. Um, you know, I I I know risk management will tell you, you know, like I I tell our people, you're working nights, you know, it's three in the morning, the middle of winter. What good am I doing? Well, how much harm can you do? And it's like the opposite, you can do just as much good as as bad, so we really need to get. I'd rather have an open position than hire the wrong person, and I'm really optimistic about some of the people we've hired lately, so I think we're in good shape there, but to answer your question. Yes, we we are exploring that, and we are doing that, at least for the law enforcement.
Okay.
Chief, two thirty-five in overtime, and then projecting out two fifty, two fifty in subsequent fiscal years. Is there a way to augment that to more salary, or is that just? Just a byproduct of operations?
It is high because of the vacancies, and we can count on having at least one injury just about all the time, um, so. If we're fully staffed, that will definitely be be lower, we have, we have the staff allocated to our our squads. Where we can let people have time up, we can let people who are training, some of our training has to be on overtime, because we have to have the minimum staffing on the road. To cover, especially in the fireside, but that is high, I'd like to see that lower, uh, but really, every single um. Every single overtime uh has to be approved by a supervisor and by by me, and I look at all of them. And if we want to do anything, um, any, most, most of our public relations things have to be done on overtime, we can't count on a road officer doing that, because they may have to leave. You know, at a moment's notice, so that's that's one of the, it's kind of a catch twenty-two, we'd like to do more of that, but. It generally has to be in overtime, accreditation, I think it was a little bit higher this year because of our accreditation and the work that went into that too. But to answer your question, if we're fully staffed, that number will come down, but anybody working nights all their course overtime. Um, whether it be uh district circuit or uh D L A D hearings or any other, any other court. Uh, so that's just a, it's kind of a byproduct of the twenty-four, seven, three, sixty, but. Because I quite honestly, I worry about burnout and people working too many hours.
Yes.
And right now, we have people that are really helping us out, working a lot of hours. You know, and us are working seven days in a row, seven twelve-hour days in a row, that he volunteered for, but sometimes we have to force people to work. Twenty-four, thirty-six hour girl, we try not to do that.
I I just had one more question um so far about the crossing guards.
Yes.
Um, I I see that it went up, you know, forty thousand at double, but quarter of that, um. Does the school chip in any for that, or we're just expected under public safety to pay?
Yeah, and I don't know many schools that. And and that number went up, because I think it was two years ago. For last fiscal year, we were losing crossing guards, other cities were paying fifteen dollars an hour, so we we bumped up to fifteen dollars. There is a city near us that is paying twenty-two dollars an hour for crossing the marriage, so. But so that that is pretty competitive, uh, and right now, we have people that are that are working, um, because we need them, it's. If they don't do it, we're doing it, and we can't do our school patrols, we can't, if a medical comes up, we have to abandon it, we just have to go. It will use animals for toll for that also.
Yeah, and I know Lieutenant Coburnet uh worked with the schools, and of course, a couple of different options, try to look at maybe if there's volunteers. Interested parents, supplement some of those things, and really none of those programs yield approval.
We can look for a third party vendor with astronomical increase.
Chief, the fifty thousand for professional development, are those things, kind of development to keep them here, to keep them. Engaged, or is that essentially just status quo, legal development that every city?
It's it's mostly, well, I I I think we probably do, or we try to do more training than I think most departments do. You know, my ma- my master's degrees in educational technology, I'm huge into education and training, because that makes our people better. Um, but with our staffing, it's kind of hard to do that, that includes police academy tuition that we get reimbursed from, but it has to come out of that. Uh, fire academy, M F R, um, legal updates, our our range days, so it is kind of all inclusive. Uh, we're part of a consortium in Oakland County where we sent, we can send people to train at local police academy, advanced training. A lot of them are free or are reduced rate, so our our act three oh two money goes in. We pay that directly to O C C, and we get, we get that in in training, so that is basically, that's a lot of mandated training, there is more mandated trade training coming. If you look at the revenues, there's a new line in there for mandated uh training that. We don't know what we're gonna get, we don't know what's that's gonna be yet, but they told us, be be ready for it's coming, so put something in there, so we're with Carl, we kind of. We put, I think we put two thousand in there for now, we're hoping that's more, um, but it's basically all-inclusive training.
Thanks, uh, Chief, just a question, we've had this conversation in the past too, but I know, and it's broken up over two line items with the ammunition for training and then. And actually, ammunition, who's the current provider that we're using?
Uh, we go through the uh, um. The state bid, it's uh, I believe we're using uh, it's not.
Because I know when we talked about it, there was, there was a problem with uh being able to source that, because of basically market share.
And and if if, and typically, that money, we'll try to purchase it as soon as we can to get it, because sometimes that ammunition is hard to get.
Yeah.
Um, we've been in pretty good shape here recently, uh, I think that was maybe a product of COVID, and that was one of the only vendors around.
Yeah, that makes sense, okay, thank you.
Sure.
Did you have something?
Yes.
Councilmember Henning.
Yes, um, the fire engine in twenty twenty-seven, so our narrative talks about. We could have, if we get the restored mileage, we'll have the money to pay for it. How are we gonna pay for it if we don't get a restored mileage? I think we need to start making plans for that now, with the assumption that. Don't assume the most pessimistic that we aren't getting the restored mileage. And we need to start figuring out how we're gonna deal with that, because I don't think that's something, I mean, is it something we can put off?
Um, probably not.
Yeah.
Um, and I will, like everything else, I go back to my inflation joke, um, you know, we thought three or four years ago that. You know, five hundred thousand would probably do it, I'm hearing most of our million dollars now for an engine, and that's what we paid for the tower. The tower we have now, if we bought that, it probably cost us two million dollars, that's that's the going rate now, so it's only getting worse.
Right.
There is also, it's about a three years to get it, um, my understanding from talking to Lieutenant Miller, you know, they they require the the. Fund the chassis to be purchased, which is about two hundred fifty thousand dollars maybe, and then the rest can be financed, so.
But even that.
Yeah, you you, and it's, and it was nice being able to, you know, we saved, I mean, I guess, look at the grand scheme of things, still, we saved twenty thousand dollars by. By paying for it right upfront, so any money you can save, that we didn't have any finance charges and.
Right.
And we did, um, you know, I I like to tell people, our our tower doesn't even have power windows, we only got what we thought we needed.
Right.
Um, so, you know, we we look at getting what we need, not just for now, but for the twenty-year life cycle, if you've been, if you've been planning that far in ahead.
So if we meet this in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and it takes about three years, that's three years from now.
Next year, we need to order it something.
So, and I don't think that's in this budget, so.
No, we're not sort of pre-funding that at all.
So some of the options, again, when you look at this, if that is a priority, we're we're talking about quarter million possibly doing good this year, and I think it might be even a little better. What we could do, again, if directed, if this is a priority of ours, is whatever our surplus is for the current fiscal year. That goes into a new capital project fund, set the money aside so that it can start to accumulate. And I've even seen where, what we want to do as a as a policy is, to the extent we have any. Access, annually put that in there, and then begin, it's hard. Two months before fiscal year end, starts to throw three hundred thousand dollars in there, a- again, we can, but. It it's, if we know that's a priority going forward, and we say, yes, it is, then the future budgets, the expectation would be. X amount needs to get factored in there, and that's our highest priority, and then it goes from there, but I think we have a good opportunity in front of us to put. A good chunk from the current year surplus that that's anticipated, and again. I in general, I always tell everybody, expect a, if you're monitoring your budgets like you should be, and nobody goes over budget, guess what, that means you're under budget. In every single department, so again, if you're actively monitoring it, and I usually, that number is usually around one percent. So one percent of a fifteen million dollar budget is a hundred fifty thousand dollars that you should count on of having access. You know, being under budget by the hundred fifty thousand, again, another number that can be shoved into that capital project.
I guess, Chief, my question would be, so in military, we have a lot of. I do not like the term reached the end of useful life, because I never feel like to tell anything. Because I have a lot of military equipment that has reached the end of its useful life, and it works amazing, so. My question would be. What are the, what are the maintenance reports, so aside, like this put reached the end of this useful life aside. Is it on its last legs, is it? Serviceable, is it what? Because that's really what you want to know, like, if you tell me this thing is literally going to die any second, that's different.
And and you, what we try to do is follow, well, we don't try to, we need to follow N F P A recommendations. And N F P A, N F P A re- recommendations are twenty years, if nothing happens, great, but if something happens. You know, we're not following the recommendations, and and I'm sure there's liability attached to that. Um, to answer your question, it caught on fire uh about a year and a half ago, uh. As we had actually put out a fire on fire engine right outside our station, was driving back from from a uh, a wire down, um. We take really, really good care of our equipment, it doesn't, you know, the most mileage all of them get is driving for service, because we use. A really good vendor, that's about a two and a half hour drive from here, um, so if nothing happens, great, but. And and I I'm with you there, like our vests have a five-year where they expire, they expire. It's not like two days ago, they were fine, and now they're they're bad, you know, um, but that's what we try to follow, um. You know, we we do have a potential buyer for this current engine, um, and that's how we. I don't want to say get got rid of, but we were able to trade our ladder and a little bit of, you know, some cash spending later. Uh, to get the squad too, which we upgraded ours, so. We're in, we're in pretty good shape right now, but we don't know, and as always, one catastrophic failure and. And that can't be fixed, we're in trouble.
Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, uh, yeah, I do, I do like the idea of being um mindful of the procurement cycle. For these kinds of things, and we're here in like three years before we could take delivery and that kind of stuff, so it's certainly. You know, there's a lot of time between now and then for something to potentially go wrong, I know that the crew does an amazing job taking care of the equipment. Uh, follow-up question was around uh that two twenty-two or thereabouts. It appears as though it currently is projected to go into the fund balance as a contribution, and then we would just ride that. Uh, so rather than contributing, would I be safe in assuming that the fund balance would be? Different, um, uh, if we were to set this aside, uh, and we'd still be within our policy, right, that's kind of the crux of my question, we have a policy around the. Amount of fund balance that we'd like to, it's not a, you know, mandate, but it's our intent to stay within a range on our fund balance, would this. Put us outside of that range if we were to allocate that instead, or?
So thi- so this reflects the total fund balance the city has for the general funds, there, it does not delineate the sign from unassigned. But that was gonna be one of my suggestions, is under the city's policy, uh, twenty-five to thirty-five is the ideal range.
Yeah.
Uh, twenty percent, uh, and below is the not to exceed, uh, the city could opt to take anything over the twenty-five percent and. Move it from a sign, unassigned to assigned, uh, and utilize that as your uh. Capital costs specific to this, that's the approach we took when we did purchase the the ladder truck, is we were assigning, we were accumulating fund balance. For a specific purpose, uh, and then we made that uh larger expenditure without having to take on debt.
Yeah, thank you, I recall that that strategy as well, and just wanted to ensure that that was our thinking now, and we still stated in our. With our guidelines of our.
Yes, that can be the adopted, uh, just give some I, um. Some options, and that absolutely could be how city could, I, again, we have to get a little bit further in the numbers and see where we end here.
Sure.
See what we would be above that twenty-five percent mark specific to unassigned fund balance, but council could absolutely adopt policy, would they take anything over that amount and assign it? And the projected, if the two 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 comes in, it's at twenty-seven point six percent is what fund balance would be. If the two 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 actually comes in.
Okay, and if it doesn't, I'd I'd assume we'd still be above that.
Yeah, yeah, either way, yeah.
Yeah, excellent, thank you.
Because again, the theory is the same, either you assign it within the fund, or you physically take it out of here, so it would be a transfer out here to a new fund called. Fire Truck Capital Project, or you know, governmental capital project, so again, the. The the real dollars are moved out of the general fund, out of sight, out of mind, and sitting there for any capital related, so if you ended up three years from now financing the truck. And you had a million dollars sitting there, you could use the million for anything you want, you know, you take it out, but. Again, that's a policy thing we're talking about, but what is our priority, is our priority, let our surplus fall to fund balance, or is our priority. We know we have a huge capital need, let's start taking anything basically over the frozen four million oh sixty, we have right now, and shoving it into a reserve.
Uh, yeah, I like that general strategy, because certainly, I mean, from even future communication opportunities with ourselves, and future councils and residents about. You know, it's not like we have this, you know, forty percent fund balance, it's like actually that's being tagged with some specifics, but put it over there where. We intend to spend it, right, given the future projection and not a commitment per se, but it's like here's our intent. Let's do that, it keeps the fund balance clean, because it's an actual, you know, balance of what's unallocated and things, so I think that's a wise strategy.
Yeah, if you're pulling it out of there, I always find it's easier, because again, it keeps it clean, then you know, my fund balance is twenty-five percent of the general fund. And I know, because again, that fund is separate by itself, that you'd have to budget by itself for particular reasons, so we would highlight.
Yeah.
You know, if you're gonna spend it.
And it signals our priorities, as we've kind of an overarching theme for.
And it just creates that pool of cash to use for whatever your priorities, so the priorities different three years from now, you know. That wall falls down. And and that's the intense, you know, joking aside, that's the intent of the unassigned fund balance, it's to address unforeseen issues as they come up. Um, that's, it's not like the city only keeps only twenty-five percent of operational dollars. It is twenty-five percent of operational dollars that are not otherwise assigned to anything else.
So do you have some?
Yeah, so, um, just want to make sure I'm sure on the timeline, to. Get the truck in time, we're probably gonna have to order it this upcoming fiscal year, right? Or the following fiscal year.
I think we can wait till twenty-five, twenty-six.
Okay, we can wait one fiscal year, and then, um. Uh, then we'll need. Approximately three hundred thousand saved over three years, each of three years, to be able to pay it off, we'll need three hundred. Two hundred fifty, three hundred thousand upfront to, for them to start work. And we'll have a little bit of time to save the balance, but we probably want some partial payment partway through, so.
Though they want it all paid.
Yeah, pretty much. All the entire.
Yeah, like, yeah, that's the issue, is you have to basically pay it upfront, like say, they they want the two fifty cash before we even talk to you for the. The chassis part, but even the other one, it's either paying me in full, or you're signing a. A lease arrangement, installment arrangement, that you're starting paying now, is you're not, you know, even though you're not gonna get it for four years, you're paying for it now. So it's really changed, and I've had three fire trucks ordered in the past twelve months, and the average is one point two. And the ladder truck was two point two.
Yeah, ladder truck, ladder truck is satisfied.
We won't get power windows.
Yeah, okay, so.
Not light radio either, right?
They'll be, they'll be purpose, purpose-built vehicles.
Yeah, to Councilmember Henning's point, there's a bigger conversation that needs to happen.
Yes.
Beyond this fire.
Yes.
Um, so yes, we need to make sure that that essential public safety piece of equipment. We're planning for that, and we can get that ordered, so there's not a disruption in service, but. There's a larger capital discussion that probably needs to happen, and I think Carl's starting to hit on some points that we need to. Be looking at as with a capital reserve policy, um, and try to start saving up for some of these things, but. Just a week on the street, two hundred thousand doesn't go very far.
Right.
So there's more work that has to.
Great, thank you.
So I think I. Would be, if we move towards our, you know, above our twenty-five percent, moving it towards. Maybe doesn't have to be the twenty-five percent exactly, but we start. This fiscal year, contributing towards a capital improvement, but we can, we could get a uh.
Draft policy together relatively quickly. If that's the direction that council wants to take a look at, is tie it to. Uh, your um ending fund balance, or your ending unassigned fund balance, tie it to that, we could bring some samples together and. Really taking it to council, I mean, you're just picking.
Right.
You know, are we gonna do all of it, is some of it, is it all going to a general one, or is some? You know, are we gonna do all of it? Is some of it? Is it all going to a general one or is some gonna go to streets or some elsewhere? But we'll we'll bring you some. Samples.
I like leaving a little bit of breathing room because there's still the unknown.
Exactly.
And we won't immediately fall below our um thresholds.
Yes.
But remember, even if you put the money over there, it's not legally restricted. Yes, if that does come up.
Yeah, that's a good point. Thank you for mentioning.
Chief Berkeley's not that big, so let's say. If ladder goes down now, right, on the way to a response, blows a tire, two tires, three tires. What is our contingency then? Is it our neighbors, Oak Park, Southfield?
We have automatic aid with Oak Park uh which just got a a stick. Um, which just means it doesn't have a bucket on it. The bucket gives us so many more options. We can work off it. It can be tethered to it where ladder ladder can't be moved with people in it. Um, but anyway, uh Beverly Hills and Oak Park both have stick ladder trucks. So quite honestly, they're always calling us because they want they want the tower. Um, and really any experience we can get in any other cities. So if there's a fire anywhere, we're all gonna be there. Anyway, unless it's something that's uh unless it's something that uh, you know, we have enough people, we can take care of it right away. Um, and we have had a time where we only had one truck in service. We had uh the engine was down and the tower went in for some maintenance. And we had our squad was our only our only truck here. So having those three is huge. You know, we've only added that the last couple of years have been able to get that third apparatus and it's huge for us.
What about Southfield?
Um.
Mutual in a mutual age.
They're in a different Mavis group.
Ah, okay.
More than happy to help them and then.
Yeah, I got I yeah, okay.
So it's really the public safety departments plus Troy. And Franklin fire in this in this area.
Okay, thank you.
No park got their brand new ladder truck last week.
Oh, yeah.
I did have a question about the free patrol vehicles.
Yes.
Um, and it says to replace existing market. Are those cars needed to be replaced or we're just going to unmark instead?
No, I'm no, they're all they are all marked. If there's a tight boy.
No, no, it just says change over to replace existing.
Yeah, they're existing.
They're not just gonna get them unmarked.
No, those are all marked.
Okay.
Okay, we good? With public safety. I'd like to take a five minute break.
Yes, please.
Thank you. Okay, we'll be back in five.
Those general fund, we um really don't spend a whole lot of time in general fund. For spreads, we've got so many different departments. What you see here and then the one-on-one account, one-on-one four four one is basically the maintenance of city parking lots. City hall grounds. Special events, special events, that kind of stuff. These changes you'll see here is mainly the maintenance, maintenance and moves to facilities. And then an increase in and recruitment and retention. Got a couple pickups that we're looking to replace. And when we buy those pickups, now you put when you buy, we always look at not only how useful it is for us. And what timeline should we agree for it? But also what is like a a general pickup? What is the end user? We put it all that? What are they putting for? And if something that we can accommodate, that give us more in our resale value? It works. Not that long ago, I had one truck. Nobody wants one truck. We still value on one truck. White trucks easy to sell. Everybody wants white trucks. Those are. Lot of changes we do destroy our equipment. Pretty good place now. We've got a timeline. When you buy these these equipments that are running it to the end of its useful life, look at. How can you buy it? Keep that truck and find that sweet spot where we can sell that truck. It's a big goofstone for our money. As much as possible and get into something else before we run into those big major trucks.
I mean, you just had a recent win, right?
Oh, the back of.
Yeah.
Eighty-five percent.
That's incredible.
Of the original purchase price, kept it seven years, ran it every day.
Yeah.
And got over eighty percent of the original purchase price back. That's huge.
That's strange. Is that the same for pickups or is that is that such a?
There was a point with pickups, we could buy a pickup, run it for two years, two or three years. And the resale is so high on them that we can sell it. Now it's it's a little longer. Prices are prices before the. Were more like a five year mark, any more than that. That's that past that point, now you start to put in a little more uh repairs, parts, resale drop on it quicker. But about five year mark is is equal to that right now. Next change is day to day. Products, same issue. Six months. We had a catometer banner. Three years from the almost three of the data war. On the one-on-one four four three that the panic done, a big change there. Move some of the first right field maintenance costs to discount. Just kind of streamline where we go on there. In the past, we would do the repairs and we send it and voice down the first mark. You know what needs to be fixed? It's all city-owned equipment. If we fix it, build up there. Training, see a lot more as far as training and subscriptions. So you have four pro service subscription that's gives us all their PSBs, all their. All the services information we need. It also allows us to send our mechanics to port for training. Same as the deal that we have. But actually, our fleet is is pretty heavy or they seem to be giving us the best discount and the best after service. Down a little further. Public work street programs that's street lighting and that's typically all paid in the energy. Speak for that. If you call, we got a grant to upgrade some of our street lighting to LED. Fortunately, there's a lot of grants for that. ET is now. Some of the street lights that weren't eligible were replaced are now eligible for replacement. So the waiting list is a little longer, which which is further down the queue. We haven't realized that yet. That's budget and that working budget and other department, but once that work is done, we should see a just decrease in that. Hey, what comes on?
I had a question about the truck. So you um, there's two in here. Um. You know how old those current ones are?
One, I believe is in two thousand nine. They were bought the same year.
And I sent a question in and um about the DPW or Parks and Rec also wants one? Is that something that they could buy for their needs?
If they needed it, I don't think they have to buy it. We just, normally we do is we take and go to get rid of certain equipment.
Sure.
If there are some things that we buy any truck and the one we have is better than what Parks and Rec has, we always take the worst vehicle.
Okay.
Uh, so it's always offering another part of first, that's something that.
Like they could use it and not buy their own brand new truck.
Yeah, if if that's something works for them. Part of that, you still have that loss you're taking even longer.
Sure, but.
Anytime you're pulled on. Yeah, if it works for them, they're more welcome.
Council member Hennett?
Yeah, I wanna give thoughts. Council member Patterson credit for this idea. Um. You know, we have Parks and Rec needs trucks, DPW needs trucks, um. Pickup trucks. How often are they being used, all used at the same time? Would we? Could we have cost savings by having a fleet? You know, a fleet of trucks and whichever department needs it checks it out.
That is a possibility to have coordinated in departments. Um, there are times that they are all out. But we could maybe use some different vehicles for that. I wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed to it. Especially in a in a time where we're hurting capital, buying punch capital. You know, a lot of cities have a dedicated motor pool, which is kind of sounds like what's going on there.
Yeah, that's kind of that's kind of what I'm suggesting and what triggered the thought also was you're doing that with the maintenance anyway.
Yeah.
In the department.
And we do have some, the Parks and Rec, we have a gator that, I don't use in summer or in the winter, same with the tractors. So if there is that crossover, when any kindly have a chance to share equipment. If I purchase this, it's really a seasonal piece of equipment. If Parks and Rec has something to use seasonally, we can use one piece of equipment to cover both of those. That's great.
Yeah, so I don't think that's a question we can answer tonight, but I think it's something to work at if. What the, you know, when they're used, if we can, you know, eliminate a vehicle essentially.
Trucks would I I I want to speak for Sean, but trucks I think would be harder than some of the other equipments. Yeah, as far as, yes, the trucks are especially in certain seasons of the year. You know, winter time, honestly, we have some pickups that really aren't used too much. But you don't have a lot of field maintenance in that summertime, they're all out. Sure, that's what I was concerned about is the summertime and that.
And that's what Parks and Rec probably needs.
Yeah, and I don't know if this is for you or for Dan, but what is the need of Parks and Rec to have a truck? To pull the lawnmower trailer? Is that what they're?
So one is primarily used for grass cutting, um, and then one is just a general maintenance. When there are too many park runs on trash, things like that, it's used for that. So one typically stays connected to. The lawnmower truck um that will get taken if. They're not blowing lawns that they to do other projects, but um.
So you have two trucks.
Correct. And then there's a field maintenance van um that houses all of the. Baseball field maintenance supplies.
Can the van pull the lawnmower? Like it had that capacity or could the gator?
Um, I don't think, I'm not sure about the van. I would say the gator probably not an optimal option for that. Um, it is a, it is a a trailer. It fits two lawnmowers, so. Uh, a truck is probably needed, but um I'm not sure if the van has that.
Or the another thing to pull the trash maybe, like your van should be thrown by the trash or the back of the car.
Yeah.
All right, I didn't mean to. Type of trucks and I know they overlap.
Public works done. All right.
Library, I didn't realize we're.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, um, yeah, and this is something I, you know, I have a lot of. I don't think we're gonna answer these today. There's a lot of questions I have on how much it's costing for yard waste and the. Um, the yard waste and the um brush pickup.
Remember, we'll cover that in the rubbish fund when we get.
So we're gonna.
This is definitely general funds.
Coming back to that, then.
Um, so the overtime, is that similar approval process that as?
This overtime here is mainly special events.
Special events, okay. So now we're billing.
Council member Patterson, we have a a busy schedule now.
Correct, right. I just. Trying to look at it as a.
Yes.
The overtime.
All right, good evening, everyone. Kind of hard to believe that we're almost a full year into kind of the library's new norm uh right now, so. Um, since the budget changes last year, we've uh been working with reduced library service hours. Um, we are back to a seasonal hour schedule, so we'll be switching uh coming up here for Memorial Day. And that'll be our schedule until Labor Day. Um, we also eliminated the full-time secretary position um when she retired. But we now have a part-time office administrator, so that's been a good kind of interim staff. Um, to cover some of the, you know, invoices and social media stuff and. Just some of the stuff that was uh fallen between the cracks, so um that's that's our new norm. That's that's where we're at now. Um, our priorities are um definitely to maintain a team of dedicated people. We've got a great team now. Um, I think we're staffed at a good level for the number of hours that we're open. Um, just really engaged staff. People are excited to be there, happy to be part of the team and um just good forward motion there. Um, another main priority for us is purchasing new materials and building the collection, making services available. Uh, not only uh physical things on the shelf, but also additional services. Uh, digital content access as well. So. Uh, really, when we're looking at the budget, those are the two big priorities that I'm I'm happy that we continue to to fund. Um, looking at this budget compared to previous years, our calendar vendor is shutting down operations. So uh we'll be switching to a new vendor for that. So the calendar we use for program registration. And we've now also moved all of our room reservation online as well. So we kind of did a homegrown uh room reservation system. Um, uh several months ago, that's been working out pretty well. The new calendar vendor that we're going to will be able to do program registration and then also the room rental stuff as well. So it'll be nice to have that uh together. Um, as you heard earlier, some of the facilities expenses have come out of this budget and are now handled by Alex. I'm very grateful for his expertise for some of these projects. I'm glad I don't need to learn all about HVAC systems. For example. Projects um for this upcoming fiscal year, um, these are things that were previously deferred. Um, we'll be expanding the security camera system and will also be replacing the public scanner. Um, system. So very excited to see those. Um, still in the recommended budget here. And then the following year, we'll be looking at uh replacing our copier, which we currently own. And then just a uh maintenance on, we're already several years past uh when it was scheduled for replacement, but it's still plugging along. So I feel comfortable that we'll be fine with that uh timeline. And then reupholstery of um some of our chairs. That's another thing that we've pushed several times and. If in the twenty-five, twenty-six. And that's it for the library.
Questions for Director Church?
I just have um one question. So the public scanner. Um, we're you're wanting that this year, the the copier next year?
Yeah.
Could we just hold on to both and get a copy of it with the built-in scanner?
Um, the so the nice thing about having a dedicated scanner is that it is um. More user friendly um and more patron-driven, self-serve, so they can just go up. And use that machine separately. Um, our copier is tied to uh Bill Coin Cepther. Um, so those services are are kind of separate. Um, we've been getting by with our eleven-year-old scanning setup right now. Um, it requires a lot of handholding, so that's why I'm pleased to see it this next fiscal year. Um, just because that'll free up a little time and cheap will just be able to walk over it and use it on their own.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Your studio's.
Again, being an accountant, I can't spell IT. I spelled it W B R A. I guess that means IT is is that.
Um.
Stand definitely at the face of reading.
I know. I thought I I tried to beat him, but that's all right. You're welcome for the material. Um, this year's budget is pretty close to last year. Um. I've talked to many of our vendors. They've been very creative and a lot of our purchases that we currently uh have. They're under purchasing contracts. They're generally three to five years, so they're holding right now. But eventually that dam will break and uh for some of uh my other colleagues at other municipalities. Some of their subscription costs are going up a hundred to two hundred percent. So we are. We're holding steady, but we know that eventually this will will increase. Um, a lot of the talk is uh basically features. They're trying to include more and. You know, upsell and all that kind of stuff and everything. Um, so right now, we're kind of holding steady as far as most of the software. Um, most of the services and everything as far as contractual stuff and everything, like I said, that's under purchasing contracts and maintenance contracts. They are all holding steady. Uh, we're lucky that we're a smaller municipality. We have smaller needs as far as storage. Equipment, um. Um, and software requirements, so we're not as affected as some of the larger entities like at a, at a county level. Where I've been to some um, regional meetings and it's painful to see that they're paying. Tens of thousands of dollars more and they're looking for every way to, to cut costs, so. I'm uh, I'm very grateful that I don't see the hundred and two hundred percent. I'm lucky for maybe three to five percent of that, so. And we're gonna try to continue that way. I've, I've reached out to all the vendors as far as some of the creative things that they can do. Um, they're looking at all their purchasing contracts, we're under probably a half a dozen different ones. In various different ways to, to try to offset a lot of the, the costs, but it's inevitable, everything is going subscription. It's, it's not, it's not fun. We all complain about it pretty much every time my colleagues get together that. Once you buy it, you're locked in and when it stops working, then. It stops working, so. Um. Anything as far as security-wise, we're holding steady, we haven't had any major instances as far as we've replaced all our firewalls, everything's up to date. Uh, some of the goals next year is uh, security awareness training for everybody in the city. Um, including elected officials for some odd reason. Um.
For a very.
So, yes, we had uh, we had some fishing over the weekend from uh, the mayor. Um, to all our, yeah.
Oh, my.
Yes, all our public accounts, so.
Oh.
Yes, yes. Uh, so, yeah, we'll be doing some security awareness training and eventually it's going to be uh, mandatory. Most of all the security uh, requirements as far as some of the audits, they're gonna start. Um, mandatory training. They are doing for public safety for C G S, uh, the FBI has uh. Has done that already and they've been doing it for a number of years, just in the civilian world, they're starting to catch up, so. And no mayor, I can't send you those gift cards. So, um, but otherwise, everything else is, is probably as boring as it can be as far as holding steady, which um, I like holding steady. I don't like spending money that I don't have to, so.
Well, we appreciate.
Yeah. So, any questions, comments?
Well done, yeah, thank you.
W B R K.
And just to chime in on his way out, the uh, B S and A cloud that they're gonna mandate soon, and they've been early implementation. As an example, if we pay fifty thousand right now for B S and A, they want fifty thousand dollars to implement cloud. And then your subscription will be a hundred grand going forward.
Stop that.
That's literally the.
And that's conservative.
Yes. It's, it's whatever you're paying now, that's the new implementation that it does to start. Yeah, so, yeah, it's, it's, it's out there and it's coming, so.
So, yeah. All right, go ahead.
I probably assumed.
Yeah.
Are we even looking for that?
Well, again, that's, that's three, four, five years out, so it's not mandatory.
It's just, that's gonna be here soon. It's like a fire truck.
Definitely a year.
In a cloud sort of way.
We're thinking a hundred percent increase or two hundred percent increase to this account, that adds up very fast.
Yeah, so the goal is only three months here, um, to do this first, and then next year I want to give you three years. So that, that's where it starts to creep in and we start to really address, again, continue with the capital needs, continue with those types of things and, and see if we can balance. Because again, as we sit here today, the twenty-five, twenty-six, that's the column I move forward and that's our starting point, and then we just adjust from there, so. As that big stuff starts to come on, we can also be putting the money that we talked about for the fire truck aside for that stuff as well, and it can all be set aside for that as well.
The overall cost, I'm, I'm guessing for B S and A as far as implementation, everything could approach two hundred and fifty thousand realistically. And then the annual maintenance fee be a thou, uh, fifty thousand dollars. And what they're doing now, very, they're pretty clever as far as there's not gonna be really added new features to what we have. So they're, they're dumping all their resources into the cloud as far as, here's the carrot, I mean, if you want all these new fancy features. Yeah. If you spend a quarter of a million.
Speaking of yesterday, though, I do want to commend you and, and Harrison as well, I know he's not here, just getting those. Modules and all of the thing, I, I know what a mess certain spots were.
And I can tell you, it hasn't just been me, I know, you know, finance has been great with Lori.
Yes.
Of the building department with uh, community development and Kristen and Kim and that is, that was very intense as far as looking at those processes and everything.
And I am so appreciative of all, all of you for doing that and, and getting on board with it, because I know it's streamlined things and it has ultimate, I know we're talking these big numbers, but I know it has saved. Uh, money in the long run and increased accuracy and increased service delivery and a lot of things, so.
Yeah, I think we're, I mean, realistically, as far as just the, the water bill emailing, I think we've, we're over a hundred, over a thousand. So at sixty-six cents, I mean, we're, we're saving. Yeah, so it's, it's paying off.
Yeah.
It's a slow process.
Yes.
Pretty wrong, but we are making forward progress.
And something like that creates a better user experience as well.
Correct.
Yeah, people expect that kind of thing now. And commend you and the, and the, and your colleagues for helping make all this happen. I like the idea of kind of keeping an eye on the future here as we start to roll into subsequent cycles to, to speak that, the strategy we talked about earlier with uh. You know, setting aside stuff that we, we know what's gonna happen, right, to start to begin to uh, tag those things. Uh, that makes a lot of sense, uh, so I'm glad that, that's, that it's in our peripheral vision.
Yeah, I'd rather, especially with the B S and A, I'd rather be on the tail end than be a uh, trendsetter and try to work out all the bug ahead of time. I'd rather get a lot of that stuff ironed out first so that it's a little more seasoned to polish.
Consider a competitor, yes, and. I, in San Francisco.
There, there are lots of people trying to get into that market, but uh, B S and A has done a great job and they're nationwide now. As far as you go to any state, um, you go to Florida and a lot of uh, my retired colleagues that are working down there kind of part-time and everything. Yeah, they just step into, you know, back into Florida and, you know, the villages. They, you know, say, they use B S and A a lot, there's a lot of B S and A um, useful customers nationwide now.
So there's not really a viable.
No one has been able to break the string hole. There's, we talk about it all the time at, at all our I T conferences and. Uh, I can tell you that the easiest example was they were doing vendor introductions at the state conference in Petoskey. And the B S and A guy said, hey, I'm from B S and A, you know what we do, my booth's over there. Literally, that, that, that's the kind of market share they have, so. Yeah, and just a couple of, there's been some chatter amongst some of our colleagues and um, some of the communities that have tried to go different directions have regretted it. And now they're trying to get back, so. Once you know a system. Yeah.
And even if there is a viable system, it's a very heavy lift.
Yeah, correct.
To go over one system.
We're in the island because we are not like all our surrounding communities.
Interfaces and things with others and.
Correct.
It's, yeah, it's again, anything that does seem to pop up that, that provides uh, some glimmer of alternativeness gets bought up by them anyway and incorporated into the ecosystem. It's a lot of those, uh, works, so. But it, again, to earlier comments, it seems like we're making good use of this. We mentioned earlier about the building uh, module going online and all that kind of stuff, so it's, it's, you know, that we're. You know, we always want to keep our eyes open and I appreciate you bringing this intel to us about what other communities are talking about.
Yes.
And um, so, prep for the future.
Right.
Thank you.
I, I have one more. I, I don't know if this goes to you or another, but just our cell phones.
Hmm.
Um, you know about how many cell phones a city supplies?
I want to say it's around forty, um, but that includes camps. Um, includes all those. Um, a lot of them are turned off, so we don't get billed, especially with camps, we can kind of turn on and off.
Okay.
But at minimum, we have to get billed six months a year, so.
Even if it's YouTube.
Yeah. And, and generally, uh, all four camps correct have cell phones just for safety purposes, and they're all cracked. We all have iPhones, so they, they can be tracked and. Um, they have, have hotspots, they all, everything's computerized, pretty much it comes now, so.
Thank you.
Okay, stay in overtime, we gotta get ready then. Next, we'll ask communications.
Yes, um, so the communications budget is, I would say, fairly satisfied from previous years approved budgets. Um, the department has been in a state of rebuilding for the past year since the last time you all met for these budget work sessions. Um, I came into the role as director in September and it's been very clear that our community places a high value on timely, relevant and helpful communication. Uh, we're fortunate to have a very engaged community, but they have high expectations for the quality and frequency of communication. And as the director, I do strive to meet those with everything I do across our communication channels. Um, as I mentioned, my budget requests this year are not much different from previous years, uh, but I am asking for a bit um, additional allocated to my contracted services budget. So that I can continue to improve the quality and quantity of the um, outputs that I have for my department. Um, as a one-woman show, it, it's very helpful to have the support of a contracted service provider, um. I work currently with a P R firm, that is very helpful um, to help me with proactive communication rather than just living in the reactive space, which I'm constantly trying to get out of. Um, I do want to mention that there are some funds allocated for some telecommunications equipment. So this year, um, I will be reviewing if council chamber audio system needs to be updated, um. That's something that we can defer if it doesn't need to be updated, but um, it's been deferred for a bit. And if our audio failed in council chambers, that will affect our residents being able to watch our live stream, though they won't be able to hear you speaking. And then also there is money allocated this fiscal year to potentially replace our media encoder, which is a place, a piece of equipment that. Basically allows us to live stream the footage that our um, cable provider C M N T V takes at the council meetings or other special meetings that are recorded. Um, and puts it to a live stream on our YouTube channel. And in the future fiscal year, I have some money allocated toward replacing, potentially replacing the two D S L R cameras that I have in my department. Um, it is helpful to have two of these cameras just to have a backup and to have the opportunity for multiple people to retake photographs at events. Um, however, that is for not this upcoming fiscal year, but for next, and so there is an opportunity to take a look at those numbers and maybe I don't need to replace both. Um, and maybe I can find a cheaper option as well.
Questions or?
Um, I just thought of this one, um, A T and T cable, it's the one we are still not streaming on, are they still wanting assortment prices to?
Yes. Yes, they, they can do that and they do. Uh, unfortunately.
Great, well said.
Thank you.
All right, the last item in the general fund worth noting is the operating transfers out, so what the heck is that in accounting language? So this is our subsidy to the Parks and Rec Department. So this is when we get to the Parks and Rec budget, this is how much the general fund kicks in annually, you can see it's going the right way, so. Um, but the key there is, um, in general, I find that a well-running Parks and Rec department with fees covers maybe fifty percent. Uh, it's usually somewhere in the thirty to fifty percent range covered by fees and then a subsidy either by a mileage. Or um, a contribution for the general fund covers the rest, so whenever you talk about capital related in the Parks and Rec Fund. Yes, who's paying for it? It's, it's the general fund, the fees, you know, like I said, they're not even covering the, the programs that they're generating, so. But it's just important to note that that's where this comes from, so when you look at the Parks and Rec Department, this is the subsidy of the general. So before we leave the general fund, again, this is all the heavy lifting right here, um, the only edit I have is stay at fifty grand for. The, the departure bonus, no, I mean, the uh, yeah, search new salary or whatever. Um, so I can look to see if I could find the offset to that to keep us balanced here, uh, that's not a large number in a fourteen million dollar budget, so that.
I believe in you, Carol.
Okay, yes. So the mayor says so, so it will be done. Um, so that's the general fund, all good?
Yes.
All right, so again, as these are, again, special revenue funds by, for a reason. That means there's a legal restriction on these funds. Uh, where the funds are legally restricted for some sort, whether it's uh, leg, legislative or regulatory or some kind of restriction on. So you see, this is the major street funds, so the funding source is our share of the gas and weight tax. Which the crazy part is, it's been going up pretty well, um, primarily because of marijuana. Michigan uh, during COVID was the number one state for marijuana consumption. And the marijuana law that was written in, a forty percent portion of the collections go towards streets. So that is crazy as that is, that's why our, our percentage is there, they're going up three, four, five percent annually still. And that's not because we're all using more gas, it's because of the, the allocation there, so. That is the primary funding source, you can see there, we get about a million and a half dollars in the major street fund. Uh, the public works line item there, that is the operating cost, so that's your patching of the roads, the snow plowing, the routine maintenance, all of that kind of fun stuff. And then obviously it's capital, so we, we talk about the capital like, uh, this is the street paving, et cetera, and so the departments can get into a little more detail. And then the transfer out, the act allows you to transfer out up to fifty percent of your act fifty-one revenues to the local street fund. Because the majority of your funds coming in are for major streets. Uh, so they realize that your biggest need is local streets, so they allow you to transfer up to fifty percent. Out of major street funds into local street funds, you can transfer one hundred percent going back. Uh, because they say if you don't, really don't need any of your locals, you can throw it to majors, so there's no restriction there. That's why we always try to maximize the transfer out to the local streets, because if ever needed for a major street project, they can come back. The reality is, again, we've had fund balance here, the, the needs for the street projects as well as the roads being repaved when we do the uh, lead line programs, et cetera, will drop. You know, we'll utilize all of the street funds that we have uh, for the year. Uh, local streets, again, we can probably talk about the two at the same time, same exact thing, you can see there, again, we get a million and a half for major street funds and our local street funds, they only sent us a half million bucks. And just our routine maintenance is, is a lot more than what they sent us for our local streets. That's why we transferred the money in for the major street fund. But again, the theory's the same, our capital needs in, in the fund are here and we're gonna utilize all of the available resources that we have for the major local streets. So our city manager slash department head can say which projects we're working on next year, you thought you were done, general.
Way more.
So we had a project initially planned for this year, it's been going awry, it worked. Did some investigation work for sample and spores, and it came back well. Came back. Very thin concrete, very thin asphalt over the top. We tried to do the work we anticipated this spring, throwing our money where the bases be gone, it needs to be a total reconstruct, similar to what Willshire or Kendall going off. Um, similar to those projects. So as far as a big project. There's nothing planned for this upcoming summer, um, there's planning for the next big project in this. So the summer of twenty, spring, summer twenty-five, there's some money in this, in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Get us rolling. But then the summer of twenty-five would be the meatball for that. We did increase a lot of our concrete patching. Realistically, we were not spending enough money in that program year after year, we had some big construction part of the building, we did a bunch of slay-offs. But if you look at the amount year after year, fifty pounds, it doesn't add up. Very small. That would be our, probably our big change for both local and major streets. Street lighting, this would be where we, the L E D conversion, that would come out of here. At least the initial funding, granted, we have purchased for that funding. We did also reduce the number of trees that we're planting. We really pushed last year, we had two hundred fifty trees, it's kind of overwhelming for staff, it's a lot to fight off. Reason we did that is we lost so many trees, sidewalk program, we want to counteract that, we should, we have a good number of trees on our streets. Yeah, sure, we're reducing that a little bit, give the staff a little breathing room, see if we're gonna set, if the demand is there, we'll look at increasing it again. Hopefully it is, you know, tree level, I love trees in our streets. That would be our, our big changes, I would say. Equipment-wise, we're looking at a sweeper, we have, currently have two sweepers. That's how it was when I started, it was two. We ran one for quite a number of years, we look in the equipment rental portion, and that sweeper goes down, writing a unit, even speaking, it's pretty high. Like to replace our oldest unit. With the style we asked you what we want to go with that, we've got a truck mounted and we've got the old traditional Pelican, everybody's used to. They both, both have their pluses and minuses, there's a lot of new technology out there, money, budget. It's gonna be something, we'll research to see what best.
Questions?
I do have a question.
I do have a question about the street sweeper. I just got it. Um, so if we um, for a street sweeper was one of my questions. So it's six thousand dollars a month um to rent it. Does that include all the maintenance and everything, or we would still be responsible for that?
We would still be, it would be it would cover part of the maintenance.
Okay.
But for all the the wear items, the rooms, the air shoes. Stuff that really makes sweepers expensive, we're still responsible.
Okay. So it wouldn't be cost effective after the five-year replacement cycle?
The rent went out, right? Six, six thousand seems being a little more than that.
Okay.
The only rental one we actually have to do. And with the Pelican style we have now, and it goes down and you have to take it in for service, you've got to have a haul. The truck mounted, it's something we can't put house, right? Or put it on a traditional tour truck. Now it's specialized truck. Doesn't happen very often. Pelicans because it's a custom made unit, not on truck chassis. Some, you get some of the problems that can't fix an house. Just don't have the the tools or the technology to do those repairs.
So you, with the street, it's three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars in a seven year, but we're using it just for a backup? We don't run both together, do we?
We do on certain occasions.
Okay.
You know, if we want to get through nor- a normal sweeping cycle is a full shift for a week. Do you run, if you're running, you're normal during the day sweeping cycle, it's a forty-hour project, somebody sweep. If we run overnight, it's more of a twenty-four to thirty-two hour, depending how dirty it is and depending how many pairs apart. So the overnight sweeping, even though there is overtime involved, requires less hours.
Sure.
Less man hours to do it. Being because there's no traffic. You're not going around cars.
Right.
Not around, typically you're not going around garbage cans. Guys tend to prefer to sweep that way.
So it's a rarity that we use both, though?
Yeah, it's pretty rare that we use both. Um, spring, you know, when you get a heavy load in the spring or for the season or the collection. It's pretty rare that we're trying to use both at the same time. Unless there's a big cleanup.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, so it was disappointing to hear about the core samples, um, the core samples. Um, I see we have a that I was wondering, should we be doing that citywide to get an idea of our roads? Is that what the road rehabilitation feasibility study is?
Since we're doing, we're looking at six of the next five years, instead of getting almost to the finish line and doing samples in the final handle on, let's pick some roads and do five years, do four samples and fours and see what we have. See what we have for soil conditions, see what we have for pavement. And realistically, what can we do? Funding doesn't look great. Pretty limited what we do. At least then we have some funds, so of course to afford. I was really hoping that these roads would work. Uh, the reason we chose those roads initially, the amount of lead services that we have on record were very low. There were other roads that were just bad shape, but they had a lot of lead services. It didn't make sense to cut. Brand new road for such lead services. If I got four or five of those ahead of time, going overland is good for another two years, fortunately.
What percentage of the city with the road rehabilitation study look at, just roughly?
I don't know if I have a percentage. It'd be pretty small. I mean, if we're looking at generally with a five-year take our Pazer ratings, what's our worst roads? Take out the stuff that we're looking at, put water main underneath, in a real short timeline.
So probably like five-ish miles of
Yeah, five to ten, probably double what we plan on to start with and then see how they pan out.
It's twenty percent. It's not.
I appreciate that. Yeah, exactly. And and it's informed by the Pazer rating. Continue to be a good guide for us and for the focus.
So is that you go off of the Pazer rating, but then you take a core sample?
Yeah, use the Pazer ratings first. For that type of work. It's a straight water main, road total reconstruction. Still other quarters of the board, choose the Pazer rating and the water breaks something together.
Yep.
For a road that we're trying to kind of stretch our dollars, which is what we did in most of it. It had water main and half. Get much farther on the road. If we're trying to stretch our dollars and see are the roads that do get them up to power right now, because I know we can't fight off water main project or water main project. But we can't let our roads just keep deteriorating like they are to. Trying to find a stopgap, let's give us.
Any other questions for Director? Thank you.
Right, that's major local. Next is recreation. So again, when we talk about the fees, so this is uh bringing in about a half million dollars in fees. We had our one-time three hundred thousand dollar grant in the period here. So you see there the state source brand and that has corresponded capitalally in our current fiscal year. Outside of that, it's five hundred grand in fees. Our program is about a million and two annually. Uh, small amount of capital. And then again, this is the contribution from the general fund to to balance it out in a basis. The fund has been doing pretty good. I mean, it's uh the three thirty-one fund balance is quite healthy for a recreation program, given that we only bring in about a half million dollars with the fees annually. So um, the proposed budget keeps it at this level, does not increase it or decrease it. That's why we're able to decrease the general fund's contribution in because it's the proposed costs uh with the constant nine hundred thousand dollars in would generate that increase for our fund balance. And so obviously the general fund needs it a little more than that. So it's really just a matter of, are we comfortable with the three thirty-one? If that can be reduced, we can actually reduce the general fund's contribution in you know, to this fund as well. So by like fifty thousand. But that's the overview in in uh in recreations.
I think several of us are on the same wavelength with that. And I'm just wondering, I know we've set um policies around fund balance ranges by by funds, right? It's it's not a peanut butter where everybody has the same spread. It's like the DDA one, you want to have like very little fund balance, whereas our general fund, we're trying to, you know, get twenty-five. That kind of stuff with this, uh, if we were to kind of think about taking the fifty out of here, would this still keep us within the range of where our policy was for this particular fund or do we not have one yet?
Oh, yes. Our policy didn't address the the recreation fund. It focused more on other funds that have a broader range of uh functions in that.
So maybe there's an opportunity to do some benchmarking, get some quick ideas around what would be an appropriate targets for this one. We might find that we're kind of just barely skimming by, or we might find that there's a significant amount of opportunity to reallocate this. Um, you know, to other departments and stuff, so.
Yeah, see, we've had a healthy, it's literally gone up three hundred ten thousand the past two years. You know, so it's that's a comfortable number, I would say, given your your activity.
Yeah, yeah.
So with that, we'll turn it over to operations.
Um, so one of the main things we will see is the lower number of capital. Um, what I can say is the director before me did a phenomenal job of using the capital monies that we had to do the right things in our parks and with our playgrounds. So that's why our our capital number is uh, a lot lower than it has been in the past, which will allow us to focus more on uh, programming and events and things like that. To your point earlier, uh, Mayor, we do everything that we can in the building that we have. Um, you know, I think our our recreation programs are all, they encompass all age groups. Um, from babies to seniors. Today, uh, alone, we had a trivia uh day with forty-two seniors, they had lunch, and then quickly transitions to a yoga classes evening. So and that's all in one room. It's, it just changes over so quick. Um. We will um continue to seek grants uh and sponsorships for upcoming capital as well as event sponsorships um, to help bring those costs uh down for us. Um. One of the major things you will see um in the the line by line is recre- or miscellaneous programs is now recreation programs. This is now encompassing all recreation programs um throughout the entire fiscal year. Uh, and then we also took all of our broken down specialty camps, the girls' basketball, boys' basketball, girls' volleyball, and now have made them into one specialty camps. Uh, line item. This will also take some of the camp uh, revenue that would go into miscellaneous programs that will move to the uh specialty camp line item, which I think makes it easier to understand as a whole uh moving forward. Um, so that's a couple of things there. Uh, we are with the fee schedule, charging um community groups to use the building. Charging um up or we have up the charge for a regular renter. We are charging the school district to use uh, city facilities, baseball fields, tennis courts, everything like that. Um. To some of the questions that were asked previously, um, camp costs are all covered in the revenue that comes in administration cost. Um. Costs for um, we use a a website called Camp Doc where all the medical forms are implemented. That is all uh, accounted for in the revenues that we bring in. Um, just for general knowledge, we do a seventy-thirty split with our contractors. Um, they will set their pricing, they will get seventy percent of the total revenue and then we'll keep thirty percent. So that's where all of the is coming from.
Questions?
Good.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Mayor, can we jump ahead to page twenty-five and and cover senior services while Mr. McMitt is at the table?
Yep. I appreciate that.
So again, senior activity, this is the smart transportation program in essence. So we get about nineteen thousand a year. Uh, charges for services off of energy, remember what that is? Can't believe I forgot some. And then our operating cost of eighty-four, so um. So with that, again, minimal fund balance, so the projection is break even. So we set the operating cost equal to our projected revenue straight for the next two years. For yours.
With senior programming and senior services, we always try to account for um the cost of what the seniors pay covers what we are spending. Um, if we're going, so next week, we're going to see Mama Mia at the Fisher Theater. They were charged X amount to cover bus costs, ticket costs, uh, Chevron costs, and all of those um, costs are covered by the cost of the trip. Um, I not to toot my own horn, but I feel like we have a pretty robust senior um programming aspect right now. Um, when I first started with the department about ten years ago, they wouldn't do uh, evening trips. We're now going in the evening. We're um doing different things uh, and providing different opportunities for uh the seniors of Berkeley and the surrounding area, so.
That's great. I know. And the other is senior program revenues of about twenty grand. And then Independence for Life contribution as well as uh municipal credits.
Yep.
Um, that's what that are sixty.
So those are, those numbers there, the Independence for Life are all part of the contracts that you have seen in the last couple of weeks from Smart. Um, that is what it comes for those numbers. And then Fairbox revenue, which is donations uh each red.
Great. Questions?
This was a real good senior one.
Yeah, it was. Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you very much.
Now, everybody's favorite, solid waste. So solid waste is highlighted by our property tax levy, which is bringing in a million two-ish. And then our charges for services, again, you can see the jump um started in the current fiscal year for the commercial charge as well as the other program, which again, how is called? What's that?
Yardways collection.
Yes, the collection fees. And so that's, that's our revenues annually are about two million dollars. Um, operating costs, about a million eight. And then we have one capital item in there in the current year. So again, we went from fund balance dropping to stabilizing to actually having available funds. So the the projected fund balance, actually, especially in the second year with no capital, uh, does impact jump up. So that's the overview.
Solid waste has been an interesting one this year. Some of the highlights for this upcoming year, it's shifted about the staff. There's a lot of labor involved. It seems simple.
No.
There's a lot of hours going to just answer the phone call, answer questions. Shifting some office staff there. Everything else is pretty much going to stay the same, other than a yard, or I'm sorry, leaf pickup season. Planning on a full season to share. With that, we've made a change. There's actually a line or leaf collection. So you can separate that out and see with the labor costs. Mayor, looking at buying a piece of equipment, a skid steer with a claw or it'd be multi-purpose, but its main purpose is going to be leaf collection. You see, the roads, there's a little mill that you put on to actually mill some asphalt and do spot repairs, but the mill is broken out, the roads and that's the piece of equipment, skid steer on its paw. Without sanitation. We're also looking at replacing a pickup at the same time. You know, the yard signage, that's a new one last year. Wasn't budgeted, but it's something that residents seemed to like having the signs saying, hey, we're gonna be around Tuesday or Monday. Seems like a simple thing, but it did add quite a bit of labor, moving those signs. It's uh almost a four, five hour job of having to go collect them all and then three and four, yeah, coming section. I was kind of shocked at how much labor it put to do that.
Does it save labor then when you actually go to do the leaf collection? Not like, does it then help streamline the process or no, it's just such a
It's just a
Just informational.
Information it has helped the residents to communicate. We're on our way. Being it's a short season last year, but it the input that we got from the residents.
From a, from a context standpoint, we've talked a lot about how the general fund previously supplemented this fund. Uh, I think where that's most apparent, uh, you'll see the sections into the first two areas appropriations. Uh, public works, you'll see how it's moved almost to the tune of four. Where does this point at eyes? Um, you'll see how that's through from one point four to one point eight as those items and those activities and those functions. Uh, those ventures have returned back to the solid waste fund. Uh, and then even capital outlay would have been something previously would not have entertained purchasing out of this despite the fact that uh the equipment that we're requesting, a hundred percent services, it's solid waste activity. Um, and there is not captured here, but on the horizon, one of the reasons why uh we look to uh build our fund balance here is we've got about half million dollars in vehicles that need to be purchased. Uh, in the upcoming fiscal year, you'll see that reflected on the CERP. Um, they, we use trash, basically trash trucks uh to accomplish the the yard risk or the curbside leaf collection program. Those will uh meet the end of their useful life um in summer twenty-six, twenty-seven. Uh, even if we push it a little bit, by the time we get to that point, we want to be able to afford those vehicles. Uh, whereas now it would not be feasible. Hopefully by the time we get to that point, uh, akin to our other conversations, we will be able to purchase those vehicles. And Sean's did a great job of finding uh used vehicles in the past and keeping those costs as low as possible. But that many years out, it's hard to tell what the availability will be and what those potential costs would be.
And by purchasing out of that fund, it should drive some of the equipment rental costs down.
Sort of maybe restate that in another way. We're building up some fund balance for future capital purchases.
Then it's just not streets like garbage cans. Another, hate to say another natural disaster, but are we prepared? We have another disaster.
Okay.
The two thousand dollars for sign, did we not have them from last year?
We do, but you don't have all of them.
Oh, we need more.
You need more. Um. Finally, we ran through, I think we bought a couple of higher up on the show. Which we ran through them pretty quick. And unfortunately, they don't all make it down the street and they end up missing. So I I think that's going to honestly can be a recurring, long-term signs. I think that's going to be here with us. So I I think that's gonna honestly could be a recurring, long-term signs. I think that's gonna be here with us.
The. Office staff, pretty much someone's full-time answering questions.
Pretty much. I mean, there's between. Yard waste questions and leaf season questions, yeah, trash pickup.
Water bill.
Water bills, selling garbage, soders. When you do final, there's such part of it is residential refuse fees. So it's part of it tied in there. Selling toders. There's a lot of, I need a recycle bin, others. So you'd be amazed at how much. We call it trash really. That's probably one of our, especially last year, probably one of our biggest. Biggest calls, trees and trash are.
Especially spread with trash collection, the city being separated into two separate trash collection dates. Uh you know, there's the Tuesday that leads into the Friday, which is so right, where does it start to come down? They come back up because you've got the separate other half of the city under collection.
It feels like there'd be, you're getting a lot of the same questions. It feels like we're um. It's an educational opportunity that we should be, you know. I mean, it might be cheaper to spend six thousand dollars a couple of times a year to send out flyers with information. Instead of um paying someone to answer the phone and answer the same questions or and or. A voicemail, um you know, you have questions about trash, push, press one, you know, which is your question. And answer the most common questions that way.
We'll put a notice on them before you can even get to a Chicago line and it goes through all the prompts. Trash is delayed this week.
And they said, oh, they call, trash delayed this week.
They had to listen to it before they got to that force. So they listen to that message. And it flooded with those calls.
Yeah, it worked, but it works for some. Like I say, we're able to track uh calls abandoned midstream. And that typically is somebody got to an answer that they wanted to hear and they'll stop. But you know, we have plenty of people that go right past it too. So we're trying. We're we're trying to lead the water to the horse. Uh it's always trying to get them to drink.
Okay, the idea is we can get it and have them not call and have the answer. That's our goal.
Yeah.
If I can somehow give you the answer and you're not calling them, that's great. Makes our life easy. Unfortunately, sometimes.
And could you explain internal service and labor and then what what moves into that and the solid waste here?
That is the charge not only to this fund, but to almost every fund of the cities. Uh for the administrative time within the general government. So that's mayor council, it's the treasurer's office, it's clerk's office, it's. All of those services that we provide globally. But because these are separate pots of money, they get an allocation towards that. So that's the same allocation we've done every year. I haven't seen the detail behind it, but that's the theory behind it. So. It's legal. It's usually what you see is a spreadsheet that says, here's all the departments that provide these services. So. The solid waste bills have to get filled. They have to get collected. They have to give, you know, rolls of tax or whatever, whatever the costs are. The contracts have to come before us. With the budget has to be passed, you know, blah, blah, blah. So a portion of all those departments' time get allocated to the water sewer fund. The street funds to the solid waste fund. They get allocated to various places and that's what that means.
Is that representative of how much time is actually being spent on each fund or are we just kind of? Putting a number in?
No, it should be, because again, there's a finite pool of money. So if it's a million dollars, it's. Ten percent spent on solid waste, twenty percent spent on water sewer, blah, blah, blah. So those allocations. Because again, legally restricted money. This is property tax money that can only spend on that. So there should be support for that. Water sewer funds legally restricted money, the street funds is legally restricted. So again, there's there's gotta be support behind it. As to, you know, the houses, the ones.
Um and I think for um of, I don't think we do this this season. I think. Next season, I'd like to look at us moving away from bag tags. And you know, the cost it looks like would be twenty dollars per household um per year uh to be able to do that. Um I think. Think everyone that has to deal with the tags needs it. Um from the people selling it, from us having to force it um and uh and the people wanting to buy it. Um and. Based on the estimates we got that would make up that revenue, I wouldn't propose of doing it this fiscal year because now it's, you know, halfway through the year. You've already bought the tags. But if we wanted to go that route, um. We have a full season to know how much. Um we will need to charge, you know, it'll be about twenty dollars, but we'll have an actual estimate. But for an actual amount that will know to to be up and um. And we can start messaging now, you know, don't buy tags ahead for next year because we're gonna end the program. Just buy how many you need. Um and then if we did go that route, I'd like, rather than that RR fee, I would like if we split it up into like um. This is how much is for yard waste collection. This is how much is for leaf collection. And then the other, so it's a clear, you know, there's a clear picture, you know, because we're accused of double dipping. Well, let's make it clear what parts coming up. So that's my proposal. It doesn't have, you know, we don't have to act on it tonight for this budget, but we would have to start sending things in motion. Soonish, if that's the direction we wanted to go.
So just to clarify here, what I do at a lot of other communities as well is, used to be property taxes covered, but because of the, you know, the reductions historically. It just doesn't anymore. You know, parks are the same way as well. So a million one coming in, our operating costs are a million eight, two million. So how are we making up the difference? Again, the residential, that's the fee that we're charging for residents. The three, the budget's four forty seven, the new commercial fee of one eighty seven, and then the that, this is the tag program that you're referring to right there. So. Uh again, what we're talking, what he's talking about is the rolling this into the other fee. And so a lot of places, what we do is at budget time, we look at this and say, okay, uh we only want to charge this and basically, you know, this. You know, because this is just the same, it's just a, you know, annual fee. So if our policy is then we're just gonna spread it evenly, that's the way to go. You know, so right now it's pay as you use it versus a global, everybody's getting charged the same fee, which is. You know, kind of how property taxes is and kind of how this is. But again, that's just an operational choice that that you you would need to make. This works as of right now, but again, it's, this is all, there's no laws, there's no rules. This is all created by you guys and it can be imagined by you guys.
And I think it's a policy, um we like the water fund, we're trying to keep self-funded. We want to now make this fund self-funded. In perpetuity.
Um Carl, if I'm wrong, but council could. Come a little like we did with the uh commercial, commercial waste fee. Uh January one, a, you know, bring something forward to council that sets for the calendar year. That would bleed over halfway through, but that would uh that would give. Staff enough time to alert residents, let them know that you don't have to purchase this year, but as of January one, you'll start paying a different residential fee. So it's split fiscal years, but you could get started in well enough in advance of the collection season, which is typically April. Yeah, it could be done anytime, like I said, notices the key. It's just a matter of make sure everybody's aware, if that's the way.
And I too like that idea, and I think um. Uh having this this seat last that last, you know, last year and this bit of this year to to kind of get a baseline would be helpful. Through the the sales of the tags. I know the the um presence of the tags has changed some behavior. I saw. Myself included, more of which is mulch star leads rather than took it out. So if we were to not have to require tags, I would not be mulching them. I'd be putting them out the street. Sure. So I'm, you know, I'm probably not the only one that that took that strategy. So um whatever kind of. Baseline numbers we're imagining, we may want to think about either just trying it the first year and then run a deficit and then having to fix it, or maybe finding another way to estimate. That factors in folks that that choose to take alternative ways uh to 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 mitigate, uh you know, not find the tax.
And that's where you also, that's again, another reason for fund balance is, okay, we think it's, it'll be this, and then all of a sudden we find a whole bunch of people. You know, it doubles and the cost is a lot higher. We have, we have one year to, you know, capture that and then we can recover as a problem. Yeah.
Yep, one, yep. One question that I, that goes to that because I'm charging a user fee changes behavior. Um I don't know how we pay for the yard waste pickup. Are we paying by volume? Are we just paying a flat fee for each house?
Flat fee for each house.
So, so the change in behavior doesn't change our costs.
Correct.
So, uh which I didn't know until just now, so.
It it changes our disposal cost in favor of.
Oh, right.
Disposal, but the pickup is.
Okay, the pickup's a flat rate, but. People roll out more, we have higher, so it does increase us. Okay, so yeah, when we set a fee, we, I'm. Yeah, sure, it will be used more. When it seems free.
Yeah, right.
Based in.
Alright, cool. I just have a question about the um internal service fee. So if it's similar every. It's the same cost, right? I mean, it's the same uh services we're purchasing out of this account. Over the last five years or a couple of years.
It's an allocation, so we've chosen not to, as salaries and everything go up, we've chosen just to keep them at this low.
So in the past years. How did we get seventy two thousand dollars more from um twenty twenty two actually?
Cause at that point, that's when they were adjusted.
Yeah.
So they were relooked at. So what what usually happens is you take a look at at one point, you say, okay, here are the allocations. And then the next year is, do we want to readdress them? Do we want to bump them up or not? And the answer was no, no, no. And then. It the necessity came of, we can't afford to just hold them steady. So then you adjust the allocations based on actual cost. They can never be greater. Than your actual cost. And so that's why I bumped. And then the goal is to keep it there as long as we can, or if this fund generates a surplus, we can.
Right, and so then this is based off of a um actual work, not a percentage of the account or?
It's a percentage of the actual cost. So if we're allocating one percent of mayor and council department. If your department's thirty grand this year and it's thirty five next year, that one percent is there. We don't adjust that allocation that frequently. Try to keep.
Not not account overall percentage.
Right, yeah.
And then um I think my other question for answering the, you know, but as far as the truck. Um rental, um same with the employee, uh a full-time FTE, those. Will be tracked in our new system, correct? Like, and so if we're using this truck or parks and rec, because you guys only use it. You know, for this service. You know, I'm just saying Tuesdays and Fridays or whatever for picking them up, then. That would be charged parks and rec.
Right, well, even even within departments, if an employee is working on a water and sewer functionality that day. Uh two, two, six will charge five, five to nine, even though, even though that person stayed the DPW worker that day. Uh but they're working across.
It tracks that with by phone call. So if somebody's getting a phone call, she has to enter.
So you. As far as the.
Uh I'm sorry, kind of both, like kind of going back and forth, but for the full-time employee, we said her duty will be answering the phone about trash. Or uh leave and stuff.
Everything.
So if somebody calls and says, I have a question about my water main, then she builds that to.
No, I think that this is the equivalent of one full-time employee. So it may be, this girl normally answers, when they answer the phone, that carries over, there's. There's three.
Okay.
So the amount of time is equivalent to one person. So if you go through. Or in any of them, just says there's one employee here, two employees there, there could be five there that day or that, it's the equivalent. As far as the equipment rental, we do equipment rental, probably one oh one, five nine two. If it's a piece of equipment that five nine two purchased, the other funds paid.
And I think would it be fair to say we're making best effort, best management, so we're not making them track. Oh, I took this phone call about water. I took this phone calls up because that starts to get into little issues. We're not exactly, but we are. In a reasonable, supportable ballpark.
And we did take over commercial trash, commercial trash typically hired, sorry, first trash was typically handled and financed. And so last we brought it in-house to DPW. So all of the commercial trash you need, once we pick up and twice we pick up. All that's handled in-house at DPW.
And then um so when, there'll be the full service this time for uh curbside leaf pickup. Um for that, um how long does that take? Was that enough time this year when they went around to pick it up?
Yeah, I really, really liked it this year. These fell away.
Sure.
And we tried staying to a just a seven to three schedule, but then at the end it was closed off.
And that's where all the overtime comes in there, is that mostly that.
But we did have as many passes this year. A lot more plates.
Mm-hmm, right.
You know, for me, the quicker I can get them off the streets, the less I have to worry if it snows early. Get a big rain, that's basis flood, I get a street flooding and there's no recovery. You can't read those.
O- overall, it was a, it was an attempt to try to bring those numbers down. It wasn't worth the the cost savings. We just, we forego too much level of service to be comfortable.
So I spent some time driving around neighboring communities to see how they were doing leaf pickup and it seemed like a lot of them were not doing. Dump it on the street, that it was bag it and pick it up and um. Some inconvenience for the homeowner, um but there's also some convenience. You don't have it now on the street. Um if someone parks on it on your pickup day, you can still walk around the car and pick up the. And have we explored maybe not doing the dump it in the street scenario, but have people bag it instead? Cause I do see pros and cons, but.
I see pros and cons. Most communities I talk to that do not have a residential curbside leaf pickup, where you have to bag it. They unofficially. Because the streets on the boat are half its haul on the street. So if a resident has to blow the rest of it there, you still end up picking up a bunch of days and maybe that boat is half now. Half it's on the air, half it's in the road. Maybe a little less because you have a lot of private trees that you have to deal with as well. Still end up doing some sort of leaf pickup. You know, I live in, I have to bag the leaves and pay them, but I do it because it's shit to do. I think the residents are are used to traditional leaf pickup. You know, if that's something wanted to change, I think that's a big discussion we need to have. As we realize what repercussions are of that.
There's a technical detail on that. Would, how would they get the bags? Since we're essentially requiring them to use bags, they start to pay for them, or could you go to? DPW and get them for free? How do you, do you have to pay for your own bags? Yeah.
Okay, I've got a, same as we have our garbage store.
Okay, so they will pick up that, not just, not literally bags, but.
Then bag, but it's heavy.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not gonna die on that hill. I don't, and it's something to consider.
Yes, yes. Thank you.
We're gonna, to our whopping thirty five thousand dollars in federal dollars we get, we're committing about. Yeah, I I do have a note on this. Um. Changes in the standards have uh made it difficult for us to uh do the large trim books, the the Haven contribution. As well as the uh home tour program. The uh the allocation is not what changed, but it's the uh. Minimum amount that needs to be allocated to a specific project that moved to thirty five hundred dollars this year, which made it difficult for us to do all three with the limited funds we had. Um so um we are looking at what's next. They they wanted us to amend our application. Um our staff is working that internally, but of the three, um the Haven contribution and the large trim books are um. Are probably the easiest ones to to maintain and move forward on. The home tour program, uh we may have to look at. Um replacing the allocation we had through CDBG to at least maintain the program that we had previously. Um but again, as I mentioned uh in my uh narrative, I I think that program has been. It's good for those that are able to get into it, uh but it's something that council may want to consider in the future, uh investing more resources into.
That might be, get a village restoration.
Sure, yes.
Yeah, because we we lost the the lawn care portion of it several years ago, and I relate just down to stone and ice removal. It's uh, it's the one we're most worried about from a safety of all. Alright, seniors done. The eleven mile road box, and the balance of the twelve grand that's in there is just accumulation of interest. Income that's gonna be transferred to the general fund at the end of this system. The capital project. Um, the capital project fund, so again, this is the port building fund. So the original budget in the current fiscal year was to transfer a hundred grand towards the. The move number one for the the clerk office called the city shuffle. We're gonna move everybody around, in which we're kind of finished with. Um, but then the rest of it, we are going to utilize this year, the other hundred and seventy six grand for the overage on the H VAC system. So obviously, the quotes came in at two point six million-ish as opposed to the million eight. So this will help offset though, so the balance of this will be applied towards the H VAC system in the current fiscal year. And that'll be part of the budget amendment, that'll be presented to you. So this fund is assumed to be gone, gone, only if that was six hundred thousand, we'd be much happier, so. Uh, again, the infrastructure millage, so this is the extra voted millage. For streets and other related infrastructure, water and sewer lines, et cetera. So the levy currently is bringing in million four-ish, uh, with interest income. All of this money is being spent, so you see there the. The writing of the allocation between the street funds and the water and sewer fund, all that stuff is going to take place during the current fiscal year. And eliminate the the balance of the fund balance. And then basically every dime that's coming in over the next two years will be spent on the related, uh, water and sewer lines slash road projects that we have. So again, this is what our voters want to see, and again, it's, we've always been doing that, but the allocations haven't necessarily been following what our our goal has been, so. This fund will be zeroed out, and again, all the projects we've already talked about, you know, is what this. And from a communication standpoint, continuing with side practice signing, um, putting signage out around these projects to say, thank you voters, this is your. Twenty eighteen millage in work, still yielding proof to this day, uh, that's been a good sign for us. Sidewalk fund, we touched on that, so our annual sidewalk assessment is going to be taking a two-year hiatus. So there's just, this is the final cleanup stuff from the current fiscal one, so there's just seventy five hundred in case we need it. Uh, otherwise, the fund balance will get down to zero, the general funds are kicking in a hundred grand or more, so my estimate is about ninety grand. This year, which leaves just enough to cover the incidentals for next year. And so if a year from now, we decide we want to start it again, it can always be rebudgeted, but for the budget for next fiscal years to not have a sidewalk replacement. Anything else? Knowing again, in my narrative, um, based on conversations I've had with members of council. Uh, this is an area that should additional revenues be allocated through, uh, through a millage. Uh, I know we, multiple council members are interested in funding this as a program that's available to municipal, to our residents. Without moving through the special assessment process, uh, we could just, again, contractually obligate a section of the city and have somebody come in and do some of the similar work. You know, mitigate slip and trip hazards as needed, but still move to the city on a cycle. Refunds left, hang in, we're hanging, we're gonna spend. Water, sewer, so this is a one eight, and then the next thing, so the. Revenues, so this is the amount we charge our customers for water and sewer install, so that's what it's gonna be. So the, the current year, there was a ten percent increase, the estimate is for the future years, that will continue for the next two years. With that, we have our annual operation, operating and maintenance costs, so remember, this is cash flow basis, so the depreciation you see there. So last year, we spent nothing on capital, no, that's not how it works, that's the accounting for this type of fund. All the capital gets put up like a real company does, it puts up on the balance sheet, and then you write it off over a billion years. So, but that's not capital, or that's not cash, what this is, is the actual cash outflows. For our sewer lining, for our lead line replacement, for anything and everything, capital or the, or equipment, et cetera. And then the debt service, you see there, it's a mighty small amount, but our real debt service was like a half a million dollars last year, because it includes principal and interest. Again, cash flow basis, we need to make sure our rates are set sufficiently, our revenue that will be brought in, it will be sufficient to cover it. You look at fund balance here, most people look at this fund and go, what are we doing? We have twenty million dollars with a fund balance. The fund balance in this is not like the general fund, not like the other operating funds, this includes all the capital that it involves. That's why, again, it's cash flow is what you should be focusing on. Are we charging enough to cover our operating costs, our capital, and our debt service? And that's what this fund shows. Why do we show a surplus in the current fiscal year? Again, we're rightsizing all of those other funds and doing everything there, and really, this negative year, that was your negative million dollars of cash flow. The the last year, we literally spent a million dollars more that we brought in, and again, here's the audit report. And we borrowed a million six last year, and we had actual cash, really, from an accounting standpoint, these two should have net. The true borrowing was actual cash of five seventy six, borrowed a million six, so we really only needed to borrow a million, but bottom line. Cash would be zero, and borrowings would be a million dollars, because we literally ran out of cash, the water sewer. And so that's obviously a key thing that we need to fix, and this fixed it, so the borrowing will get rid of in twenty twenty four, you'll have an amendment that. Fixes that, you know, with the road funds and the infrastructure fund, all that other kind of stuff, that will be fixed, and then going forward on a cash flow basis. We have our operating costs, which remain fairly stable, the the primary reason they're going up is. It's four, five, six percent increase in our water costs, our sewer costs, our stormwater costs, all of those kind of things are the biggest piece of our operating. And then obviously, it's capital, you know, it's it's the lead line replacements, it's the sewer lining, et cetera. Uh, that is the overview. Turn it back over.
But not a whole lot's changed on this one either, we've got our let service lines that leave any, yeah, well. We're gonna continue doing those. Not have a water main project scheduled this year. We're looking out for the project we're gonna do, we ended up not doing, we had samples. But we are gonna be planning for the next six projects, we're looking at bacon. All of our, we got a lot of main breaks on that sections and bolt overlay. A lot of let services, that kind of makes sense. Equipment wise, we're looking at replacing our sewer camera, it's about ten years old now. Time to, kind of time to update that. We have a lot of, a lot of small repairs, but smaller repairs in there, pretty costly, and they're starting to add up. Did not use sewer lining this fiscal year. So if you look, there's a kept up amount, normally go four hundred thousand a year, maybe eight hundred thousand this upcoming year.
That's partly how we're rightsizing twenty four.
Yeah.
Another pickup scheduled for twenty four, twenty five, our water department, and then twenty five, twenty six, a replacement for big walking utility vans. Probably says big white red truck. And it does, picking up the water main break to repair as it comes out. I guess the big elephant in the room is let services, verification replacements, a lot of staff died, a lot of resources. And we still don't have a whole bracket, but we have, we have our records. That are old enough, the state won't accept them, we're verifying now, did. Part of this verification now is to try and correlate what we find in our records, how accurate are they? But I've already got a sense that stuff is old. And if the records may be ninety percent correct, are you gonna take a chance on that? We're gonna, we're gonna make this very, a lot more than that right now.
Um, why is it a partial replacement?
Pardon me, uh, here, here's listed as partial replacement for the camera. So we're keeping the chassis, uh, keeping the the van chassis and the box is good. Set up just like a desk phone, that kind of stuff, that's good, it's actual crawler, the actual camel portion, crawler, uh, reel, software, shooter. That kind of stuff, so we're gonna keep the same chassis that literally goes on, drives here, and then start the generator, since there are. We've already replaced the generator, so that's still in good shape, a full replacement of, you know, another hundred and something thousand dollars, hundred and twenty, fifty thousand. Uh, this was a cheaper alternative, I think. Normally, I would always say get rid of the chassis of this particular unit. What it does, it really doesn't. Five, ten minutes, it shuts off, it gets to the curb, it's out, generate.
Other question? Um, it's a question more from Mr. Johnson, I think, um, so the sort of wonky numbers we see in twenty twenty three, twenty four is. Are switching over from. Doing it whatever crazy way we were doing it before, to the cash basis, and so that's why things just. Seem a little weird how we ended up missing and going a million in debt, and.
Yeah, the twenty two, twenty three number you see here is the actual audited number, so you open the audit report, that's what you see here, that's why you see depreciation, no capital, debt service. A- again, the budget wise, so the estimated twenty three, twenty four is budget wise, that's not what will show up in the audit. Everything capital there will disappear, your principal payments will disappear, because again, of the income. So yes, so that that's why there is significant differences if you're trying to compare like twenty three, the other two.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, helpful, yes, yes.
Yeah, it's a very, you know, it's called modified accrual basis, which is all the other funds we talked about, this is called an enterprise, which is full of accrual, i.e. just like a normal business would. That there's a normal business out there, but the corporate world, this is accounting like the corporate world, just for this one. Just to screw us off, just I can't make it simple. I tried to explain that to our residents, that we have twenty million of fund balance, and we need to incur sure, so, cause it's not, it's not cash.
And Mayor, if I may, uh, this conversation has been robust and informative, and I think we're having opportunities to see some. Really good, uh, vision and and projects for the community here. We're not quite done, got a few more things, our meetings call us to adjourn by ten, so I'd like to make motion to suspend the rules, so we can continue. Uh, these, uh, the same level of of quality conversation, rather than like slipping here real quick to try to beat the buck before, so.
Perfect, let's go.
I don't think there's much more, again, this is the, this is the heart.
Do we need a vote?
You will.
Um, yeah, Gavin.
Yeah, sorry, Mike, like, can, do you have an idea about how much longer?
You have the D D A and you have the pension fund, there's nothing in the pension fund, so it's.
I can't stay there, like, I get up for work before you have, so. If it's like an hour.
No.
I mean, I think thirty minutes.
I mean, we're scheduled for three nights, so it's just, I don't want to just. Ten, fifteen minutes is fine.
Could have an hour. Yeah.
Can wrap up and stop, yeah.
Kenan.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Bellani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Yes.
I was told you didn't want me for three nights.
Yeah.
But I would be more than well, so we're finished. Right, water, so anything else? And I think you'll see, at the end of this year. All of the funds will come into alignment where we need them to be, the the street funds and everything else, and again, the the shark rule we fixed, the law for. Pension fund, not much to it, we collect. Um, employer contribution is obviously paid for by the levy, the three forty five levy. Um, employee contributions, and then our investment earnings, so the assumption is our investment earnings should be earning around seven percent of our reserves, our. We have, you can see here, twenty plus million dollars, uh, twenty million dollars ish is estimated at the end of this fiscal year. So the income you see here is the, what we pay our investment managers and stuff to do is generate our seven percent. The benefit payments always creep up every single year, and again, it's, um, it's just the pension payrolls that we have. New retirees, additional payments, et cetera, and then our administrative fees, that those are the fees we pay for our actuary reports. And, um, the investment managers and all of those, so you'd expect this to be. A positive each and every year, why is it not a positive some years? It's called stock market, so stock market good years, we get million to the good, stock market bad years, we lose money. Long-term investment is the key, so, uh, we have twenty million set aside for our annual pension contribution of two million dollars. So, and this is the three forty five pension, not the merge pension, this is the independent public safety pension.
I think you may have just answered the question, but to confirm, so with us for this year, the twenty three, twenty four, having an estimated only four hundred and seventy five thousand for investment income, so. Far lower than last year, and then we have a significant increase back up that we're budgeting, was that. Our just our long-term investments did not do that well?
Again, I can't speak on how that budget.
It's such a big difference, going from two million to half a million to one point three.
So remember, the the actuarial assumptions for the entire plan says an annual rate of return of seven percent. So that's historically how I budget that, so if you take seven percent of our fund balance of twenty million dollars, that's where you're getting the million four in in returns, that's where that comes from. So I've had years where that's where we start with, and then we lose ten percent in the first quarter, and we knock that down, et cetera. This is a non-mandatory budgeted account, so the good news is there's no audit report that's gonna.
Right, I mean, you can't.
It's just a tool to help us monitor what it is, so we can see here, oh, this is a good year, so hopefully, a few more good years, our annual contribution will go down, our pension levy. But yeah, in general, that's where this starts, and then amended up and down based on actual market results. And that will be on the next quarterly.
Any other questions about the public safety pension fund? Thank you.
Last one, D D A. D D A property taxes, we bring in the four hundred and twenty four-ish thousand with some other miscellaneous revenues. Um, see, we have very little in the way of capital, eh? Uh, the rest of it is just all the kinds of fun stuff that, uh, we will put on in detail, so. Uh, with that, I don't know if you have. Well, Mike McGinnis is, uh, is satisfying his other public service role, uh, this evening, so I'm representing, uh, the D D A. Uh, budget here, uh, as as was mentioned, a lot of the stuff they're doing is pretty standard, as you know, the the board has made a concerted effort to go heavier into events. Uh, largely, they're seeing the fruit of those, as they're pulling in people from all sort, across our region, to introduce them to downtown Berkeley, and bring on the, uh. Um, hopefully, the cascading consumerism that would come from people seeing our businesses for the first time. Um, so that is the economic development, community development portions of this, uh, calling attention to the capital outlay portions of it. The D D A board has recommended to council that investments in Ravina's public space, uh, if you can picture our marquee district. Uh, the downtown area, Ravina North and South is kind of our twelve-mile hub, uh, so they want to make investments in that, uh, to the tune of about thirty thousand dollars or so. Uh, we're looking at trash can installations as well, uh, something that's an upgrade over the the metal trash, or the plastic trash cans that we have now. Uh, something that makes more of a statement piece, and, uh, improves the overall aesthetic. And then also, uh, bike racks and bench seating will be two other additional portions of of capital investments they'd like to make. Uh, around the area, they don't have, uh, capital set aside for the year previous, you see, that's where we ended up, uh. Um, hopefully, making about fourteen, fourteen thousand dollar contribution to the D D A's fund balance. Uh, but it's important to call attention to the fund balance, because the board has made a concerted effort to spend down that amount. Uh, again, a TIF, uh, a TIF district, a D D A district, they are all about, uh, the more you invest in the district, the more you upgrade the property values in that district. The more that TIF yields, those continuous, uh, reinvestments of those funds into improving the overall experience of being in downtown Berkeley, so. Um, that is a summary portion of what they're looking to do, um, uh, again, their marquee events have taken off. They're really looking at doubling down on Berkeley holiday, as well as the the nights out. There are all sorts of different nights out at this point, uh, everything from leprechauns to Leia, uh, from Star Wars, um. They've been successful, even in the times where you wouldn't expect it, because of, uh, odd weather, um, our resident, our business community. Is seeing the, um, the fruits of those labors.
I just want to point out, I'm sorry, um, if we didn't have a D D A, we didn't have the TIF capture, and that. That money would not stay in Berkeley.
A good proportion of it would leave, absolutely.
Correct, and so I think sometimes there's, um, a misunderstanding about that, about what the D D A does and how those funds are utilized. And if we didn't have a D D A, much of that money would not stay in Berkeley. The sole purpose is to reinvest into our downtown, and I think that our D D A does an incredible job. Um, in support of our downtown businesses and the community in general, because everything they do. You know, really trans, it it brings joy and activity to all of our residents who choose to participate, so.
Yes, absolutely.
Any questions?
I just, thank you, I'd like to just add that, um, as you see, the the capital decreased over time there, or up and then down, that was, uh, a D D A's contributions towards the, uh, the art space. On, uh, uh, Boilish down there, in partnership with the city, in partnership with the school district. Uh, earlier tonight, we talked about an idea of like, uh, tagging some money, uh, to. Refund a fire truck, I like that concept, because it helps keep the fund balance clean, the conversation, it's not like artificially inflated, people think, oh, we've got all sorts of money. I'm wondering, uh, as we approach the D D A, given the intent is to spend it. Right. Uh, to invest it, cause you know, it's not meant to be a piggy bank. Um, for those times when the D D A does imagine having. A larger capital project that will require a couple of years of savings or building up, perhaps we could use. A larger capital project that will require a couple of years of savings or building up, perhaps we could use that same technique. To have a a line item to say this, we're going to do this amazing thing and it's going to cost, you know, four hundred grand. And so we need to set aside funds for the next four years to allocate. And it's a separate thing so that we can. More clearly show that we are actually applying the tax dollars where they belong. Uh, you know, that just, no changes to this, right? It's more of an approach. I like that approach that we talked about earlier and I think this would be another fund where where that technique could be very beneficial.
I do too. I think the DDA sort of investing in sort of a long term approach and. And flushing out their capital improvements plan, just like the rest of our departments do, uh, would be valuable to them. It's all about disclosure.
Yeah. And it helps too. I mean, so DDA has turnover uh, from time to time. And so as new board members come in. They see, oh, we should be, you know, either building up the fund balance or we should be, why is the fund balance so big? And so having this as a, as a tool, not only for clarity and 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 all that, but also for continuity. You know, as folks come in and they say, you know, why is this like this? By having it allocated more crisply, uh, then uh, those answers could be more more easily understood.
Julie.
Thanks.
I think. We're good.
See, you told me six minutes.
I'm opening the second um, public comment of the evening. Any public comment?
Quite a few questions. I'm not sure.
Name and city of residence, please.
Sorry, I'm going to control first, city of Berkeley. I'm wondering if this nineteen page document. May I already ask some of the interests to my questions? If that could be made available.
So um, Google back with the questions um, and the answers.
Yeah, it would be a bulk record.
So it can be pointed or it's going to be.
Can we tidy it up?
Yeah, I would say formatting wise, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put it out the way it is because it was kind of a a work in progress, but with some formatting, I think it could be a better document.
Okay.
Okay, I guess maybe just working backwards department wise, the DDA had. A significant uptick in contractual services. Not sure what that is, but um. Working even further backwards, the million overlay mentioned. Was part of the. Road funding that was going to happen this year. And try and understand. Is that why there's no? Bottom line to that. Infrastructure. Fun. Or are you trying to zero it out? So you, you have no bottom line of infrastructure. I don't know if you want to go point by point with residents' comments or not, or just let Mr. Wilfords kind of move through his questions and then we can. We can dress later.
And then a member of city staff will.
Yeah, the the main, the main one really is, are we going to see actuals for this fiscal year? Before we improve this budget? Because ultimately that's how we're going to determine the usable fund balance for anybody.
Thank you. Can we have your contact information?
Oh, yeah, one, one last one, this seven hundred thousand that was. In last year's budget, but not now in this year's budget. Trying to understand what, what was taken out of this year's budget. If you mentioned seven hundred or most of that was offset by revenue, but there's. Seven hundred thousand expenditures that's missing that was in the budget.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I have one, uh, Bruce Bull, uh, Berkeley. Uh, some of you know, I spent most of my time focused on the solid waste budget. I do so because it has. That budget has significant impact to the quality of life of Berkeley citizens. And it has caused by a bit of ruckus in the community. And uh, I think it's one that is. It's important to give it a critical evaluation. And in doing so, uh, when I take a look at, for instance, the change in the labor uh, expenditures. Appropriations for labor. Over the last eleven years, first nine, we hover around two hundred thousand dollars a year. I'd like the council to pay attention to that. The new amount for labor that totals four hundred thousand dollars a year. So it doubles. Uh, equates to about sixteen thousand hours of labor for leaf pickup and answering the phone. I, I, I feel like the council really needs to give that attention. Um, you, the city services have decreased because of this alleged budget. But this budget, in my opinion, is simply uh, moving money into the general fund. And that these numbers are not quantifiable, nor are they substantiated through any kind of documentation that I've asked for. Um, I'd also like to suggest that. There's been vehicle purchases in nineteen and twenty totaling three hundred forty thousand dollars. I guess council should probably take a look at those and ask themselves, are those vehicles that? Uh, we are going to replace soon in the proposed budget. Um. Or are those expenses that are not needed? In the end, uh, again, I feel like the solid waste budget is uh, much more favorable than. The budget is demonstrating now. Um, and again, I. Council really needs to look at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you, are we timing?
I was just curious, the last question I had was whether any city vehicles are used for. Personal use and vessel policy.
Thank you. With that, I I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
One was, was they.
Oh, right. This is the, this is the last one. Oh, go ahead.
I just want to thank our director and the staff. Um, for your guys' hard work. I know pledge season is on all of us. Only does one know. So thank you. Thank you for getting it early. They gave me a lot more time to go newer, to try to figure it out. So thank you guys for that. And then our office.
I would also like to shout out Lori Fielder, who I know, what he did a lot of work on this too. Um, appreciate you Carl for coming in and streamlining this process and making it more understandable and um. Putting things where they belong, so to speak. Um, it, it just makes more sense overall. Thank you all, to all the directors and staff. For your constant attention and um. Being mindful of the resources that you have at your disposal and. Making the best decisions and the best choices for the residents of the city of Berkeley. I appreciate you. This council appreciates you. And um, I just want you to know that. Well, thank you. Yes.
Yeah, I thank you. Echo, uh, guys have been fantastic. Continue to be great partners. Um, some of the. Actions we're taking to put the numbers where they belong, uh, makes total sense to me. Uh, and I think, well, all of it does. And I'm wondering if as part of our budget presentation to the public, if there'd be a way to kind of describe. The overall approach, like the meta kind of thing, like here's what we ended up doing. Cause some of the, some of the questions that we've either heard or may anticipate hearing. Uh, could be addressed by the strategies that you've put in place to help streamline the the allocation of funds. Uh, and help clarify where uh, things used to be and how they've gone. Into a the, the, the better location within our, our budget uh, structure. There be some kind of overarching, you know, not to get into every single thing that we covered, because now it's on, it's on tape, so people can listen to it later. But um, just kind of like a one pager kind of a thing that describes the. I don't know, philosophy, the strategy, the approach that was taken. Uh, at large, because you. This department has done a terrific work in taking care of a lot of these kinds of things, clean up. Across many of the departments that if you were just looking at one, you wouldn't understand all of the other moving pieces that helped get this one to where it is now. Something like that, I think would be really helpful if we could add that into the documentation things uh, in a consumable format, you know, so that uh. You know, so folks can can understand it and have confidence and and what we have confidence in.
I can tell you that Director Flora has put on the city website, uh, you know, we're. Referring to it as budget one O one, but is it called something for real?
Um, I, no, I I just referred to it as budget one O one, but it was basically an overly one pager of our budgeting process. That lives in some area that the documents do.
Yes.
Um, and I also have plans to do a residence guide to the budget, um, once this is publicized with much of your.
I, I thought that that one pager was terrific.
Oh, great.
This particular request is more of a, you know, we, we made some significant. Yes. And so I think this could add to that to say, you know, here's how it works in general. And we have these kinds of funds and enterprise funds, all this kind of stuff. I love that visual of the dollar bill that shows for every dollar of tax paid.
Oh, yes.
That makes, we get a lot of, you know, that helps communicate so, so many clear ways, so that kind of thing. This request would be to say, here's the significant shift. That we think positions the city for greater transparency and and confidence going forward. So add that into the mix. That's really terrific.
Perfect. Good. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Support. Great. Good. Monday, April sixteenth, twenty twenty four, budget work session of Berkeley City Council is adjourned. Oh, shoot. Can you tell I like?